What Debra's.
Okay. So, we're going to reconvene our session. I apologize for the delay. See, we have a lot of people here and sorry we made you wait. We will now ask trustee Lang to report out any actions in closed session.
Thank you. There were actually a number of actions that were taken in closed session and they are as follows. On a seven to zero vote, the board approved the appointment of Dr. Deborah Fitzsimmons as interim chancellor, subject to approval of a mutual agreement on an employment contract. On a seven to zero vote, the board approved a general unpaid leave of absence without benefits for three months for a full-time classified employee to serve as an adjunct counselor at Saddleback College. On a seven to zero vote, the board approved a general unpaid leave of absence with benefits for two months for a full-time classified employee at Saddleback College. On a seven to zero vote, the board approved a general leave of absence of seven LHE hours for the fall semester to a full-time faculty member at Irvine Valley College with the stipulation that the hours are to be made up within the next three semesters, subject to agreement by faculty negotiation. And finally, on a seven to zero vote, the board approved a settlement agreement for the sum of $1,080,000 as a credit to the district on contract sums previously withheld by Swinburne Builders. Those are all the actions taken in closed session.
Thank you, trustee Lang. We'll now have the invocation from trustee Jay, followed by the pledge allegiance that will come from me.
Please stand. Our heavenly Father, we bow our heads in gratitude for our new academic year that is just beginning. We thank you so much for the community's support in the efforts to provide quality education and workforce development. We are grateful for our wonderful staff, faculty, administration, and for the outstanding Development Week that we all just had and everybody who worked so hard. We are thankful for our wonderful students who have come to us for an excellent education and our educated, dedicated faculty and their sincere desire to serve our students. Thank you for this wonderful area in which we live and our beautiful buildings and grounds of our campus. We are so blessed. We ask that you be with us, be with the board tonight to help us make proper and righteous decisions for the future direction of our colleges. At this time, we recognize some of the devastation which has hit two different areas of our country, the terrible floods in the south and the fires that are in California. Please be with our fellow citizens and their loved ones, strengthen them, bless them, and help them to rebuild their lives. Again, thank you for our wonderful community colleges. This is a great gift from God. Amen.
Thank you. Please join me, face the flag in reciting the pledge to our great nation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every king and every prince.
Okay, I see that we have, we're now at item 2.4, Public Comments, and I see that I have two requests to speak. Just a reminder, when I call your name, you have two minutes to speak. Appreciate you staying within the time limits. And first up, we have Sahar Wahidi from ASG IVC.
Good evening, Board of Trustee members, chancellor, everyone attending. I am Sahar Wahidi, the VP of Academics and Legislative Affairs for ASG of IVC, and we are all here in support of the ASG budget. So, thank you so much.
Okay, next up, we have Dr. Baina. Is it Bonifaz? Bonifaz, please come forward.
Thank you, board. Again, my name is Dr. Bonifaz. I'm the student Pierre Vogodant. I want to thank the board for the time that they dedicated in reviewing this case. Whatever the decisions are, we will live with it. I want to tell you that we've been in this district for quite a while and we would like to always appreciate your dedication and also give you the support that you deserve in pursuing the betterment of our fellow district citizens. So, without further ado, I just want to, again, thank you for the dedication that you have put towards this process. Thank you.
Thank you. We're now going to move up item 6.3, which is the Saddleback College Student Discipline Issue for consideration. Anyone I see a request to speak from trustee Prendergast?
Yes, on this matter, I would like to make a motion that we amend the recommendation to be a suspension for fall semester and prior to enrollment, spring semester, that the student identified meet with Dr. Avalos to develop a behavior contract conditional to that enrollment for spring semester.
I second that.
Okay, a motion from trustee Prendergast and a second from trustee Milchek. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote on the amendment to the recommendation. We have a unanimous trustee yes vote, one student advisory abstention. The motion carries. Okay. Let's move now into oral reports. These are board reports and we'll start out to my right and have trustee Prendergast kick off.
Okay, I will leave the busyness of Professional Development Week to others. I attended anything that involved food, just about. So, with that, I do want to thank profusely Cindy and her staff for the amazing catering they did. The luau was especially amazing. Really, really enjoyed that. Prior to that, though, on August 10th, I was invited to speak during the new Laser Week to the new incoming students to give them tips and advice for succeeding in college from the perspective of an educator, you know, being a teacher myself and a coach and a parent and all the many hats that I wear. And I didn't really know what to expect when I went in, but I'm really, really glad I did it. I think they actually listened to me and we'll find out when they, you know, actually are successful. And I would thoroughly enjoy doing it again. It was, they were attentive. It was really neat seeing some of my former students there and it was well worth the time. So, if any of you are ever invited to do the same thing, I would jump on it.
Thank you. Trustee Jay.
I'm going to make mine short due to lack of time. What a wonderful experience I had during the Staff Development Week. I was fortunate to be able to attend over 16 workshops during the in-service training. I was most impressed by the chancellor's opening remarks about where the district and colleges are going over the next decade. Also attended both college presidents' open sessions that address the challenges, the successes, and the current trends of IVC and Saddleback. Also, I was impressed by the quality of the part-time faculty and how dedicated they are to our students and community. South Orange County members should be proud of the quality of education provided by our part-time and full-time faculty at both colleges. Our colleges are among the top 10 throughout the state. I'm proud to represent my community on this Board of Trustees and I don't want to go through all the 16 things that I attended.
Thank you. Okay, I guess I'll go next. Professional Development Week was a whirlwind. I attended as many events as possible, both presidents' opening sessions, the acting chancellor's opening session. Did unfortunately miss a couple, I think, the part-time faculty dinner, which was unfortunate, but I attended the Faculty Association lunch at IVC and as many things as I could possibly attend and was an honor to do that as president and welcome everyone back to this great district as trustee Jay mentioned. As I said in some of my remarks, that I traveled a lot this summer, some internationally, and everywhere I go, it seems, I do try to wear as much Saddleback and IVC paraphernalia than, as I can, and I get comments on them constantly and these colleges are recognized, not just around the nation, but around the world. So, that makes me very proud and we should be proud to be part of this district. I'd like to, I guess reaffirm congratulations to Dr. Fitzsimmons. She has our full support. She is the right person to lead us with this, in this transition. And I don't want people to understand, yes, it's a year of transition, but it doesn't mean that the colleges are in a holding pattern. We're moving forward. It's a lot easier to take an already great college and make it exceptional than it is to start from scratch and we already are a great district and have great colleges. And that's why it's going to be even easier to take us to the next level and I think she's the right person to lead us in this transition and the chancellor search and I have no doubt whatsoever, we are going to get incredible candidates for this position because it is a highly desirable position in a highly desirable district. So, I think it's going to be a fun year and we're going to, we're going to get a terrific person to lead this district. Thank you. Trustee Wright.
Thank you very much, trustee Jamal. I just want to also echo the applause that we've given to In-Service Week. I did not attend 16 events, only covered 15 events, but it was a, I enjoy In-Service Week. It's a great time to get together and to meet friends and to talk and to listen to what's being planned. I attended the chancellor's opening session, enjoyed the remarks that were made there, the two presidents' opening sessions and breakfast and so forth. Wonderful events. I broke away on Wednesday, though, for about 45 minutes. I had to go over and see that new sciences building. It's wonderful. In fact, I went back this afternoon and spent another 45 minutes in that new sciences building. As I walked into it, I just get, I'm just thrilled that we have a new science building, sciences building. I talked to two students and they said, "This is a great building. We can learn in this building." And I said, "You certainly can." And they said, "Gee." And they just, I talked to several people there. I happen to know a number of people who are in that building and so they showed me around, welcomed me with open arms. I saw Kara Street. She was teaching a class. She grabbed me, brought me in and just embraced me and it was just great to be in that new sciences building. I'm looking forward to the dedication on the 29th of September, but I'm just thrilled that we have that new building. Just a couple of things I want to echo trustee Jamal's. We're delighted to have Deborah Fitzsimmons as, Dr. Fitzsimmons as our interim chancellor. We also have CM Bramwell-Hot, who's here too, sitting here too, and we're glad to have him, so we certainly welcome him. And I, I'll close by just saying, Saddleback College, Irvine Valley College, and District Services have the most amazing faculty, staff, and management. I want to thank all of you for your tremendous work that you do every day for the success of our students.
Thank you, trustee Wright. Trustee Lang.
Yes, thank you. Unfortunately, I was unable to attend In-Service Week this year, which I regret because it is, there are some just wonderful sessions and it's a great learning experience for everybody, but at least for part of that time, I was back at the Cleveland Clinic getting an executive health screening and I'm happy to say that the patient will live. They said I'm too heavy, but something to work on, what can I say? I wanted to also extend birthday greetings to trustee Milchek, whose birthday it is today. We do not have a cake with candles. We couldn't get permission from the fire department for that, so.
I think, I think someone just invited himself to lead us in singing happy birthday to trustee Milchek.
I don't know about that. You really don't want to go there. So, in any event, obviously, just want to extend congratulations also to our acting chancellor, Deborah Fitzsimmons, who I know we will all work most cooperatively with and looking forward to working with you during this transition period and also to our new financial person, CM. So, look forward to getting to know you better as well. I also wanted to just, I noticed in going through the personnel items that Craig Justice is retiring at the end of this month and wanted to just extend my appreciation to him for all of his hard work and dedication to making Irvine Valley College a better place. That's it as far as my remarks. Thank you.
The birthday girl.
The birthday, thank you so much. I spent my birthday today here. I met with Deborah Fitzsimmons with Bobby J. first thing in the morning, going over the budget and I spent the whole day here, so it's been, it's been a cool day. I enjoyed it very much.
You spent your whole birthday here?
I spent the whole birthday from morning till night here.
Amazing.
So, I love being here, so it's been good. Just so our viewing public knows, classes began today at both colleges and it's the beginning of a dream for so many of our students and we're, the Board of Trustees is so happy to provide this dream to our students through our fabulous faculty members, professors, staff members, and administrators that are able to, the Board of Trustees could be the most fabulous Board of Trustees in the world, but unless we have those wonderful professors meeting with the students, it doesn't mean anything. So, we're very grateful for all of our staff members. There, just so people also in the viewing audience know, there's a number of Emeritus Institute classes that are still open. Last night, I was able to sign up for two classes legally and if you look in the Emeritus Institute section of the class schedule, you could find a number of classes that we provide for you and call me if you need some help in doing this. Since the last board meeting, I attended the Orange County Business Council IVC meeting where we did the New Skills at Work, which is a very interesting session. Along with Bobby J., I attended 18 sessions in the Professional Development Week. A number of them were really incredible. I don't have time to talk about them. One of the best ones was the China Tour presentation because I was a presenter at that one. And I presented a PowerPoint presentation of the Irvine Valley College trip to China, to the debate tour in China, where as a Board of Trustee member, I was able to emphasize firsthand how it was really important for me to learn firsthand how important it is for our students to learn international communication. In this global economy, our, we, our students really need to learn how to make their case anywhere in the world and our students did. They were a great group of students. I also touched a little bit on the mystery of the Terracotta Warriors and Xi'an, China, and that's where the majority of our most important debates were with the Chinese students. Other highlights of the Professional Development Week were, I don't want to repeat what the other trustees said, so I'll mention Erwin Chimerinsky's talk at Irvine Valley College. He's a constitutional scholar as well as the dean of the law school at UCI and he talked about First Amendment in our colleges and it's so important for us, our professors and all of us to know what constitute free speech, what is allowed and what's not allowed and it's, was really interesting to learn about this. And in case you missed the presentations, Jane Horlings, who is the head of the Professional Development Week at Saddleback College, sent everyone an email saying that many of the sessions will be online starting at the end of this week, so look forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess humility doesn't grow with age.
It gets worse, worse and worse every year.
Happy birthday again. Trustee Witt.
First of all, I'd like to welcome all of you back for another, what I know is going to be a great semester. I am so proud to serve on this board that serves Irvine Valley College and Saddleback. It's amazing and to have gone to both sessions to meet new faculty, new staff, I have to say that I am very lucky. So, I believe you are lucky too and especially the students because you have chosen a phenomenal, stellar college. You really have. I do just want to say that I thank Dr. Fitzsimmons for her incredible attention in the short time to our needs of both colleges and to the board. I want to thank you. And I want to thank the, I want to thank the In-Service Committee. I mean, Jane just does a wonderful job, but everybody who presented, I thought it was stellar. So, it is time for me to say thank you again and let's get on.
Thank you, trustee Witt. Student trustee Ford.
Well, I'm really happy to see all the student government members here today. This is awesome to get students to come to one of our board meetings and see all the representation. Welcome ASG presidents. I know you've been here before, but it's the first time I've been here with you. Last meeting, I was under the weather, so I didn't get to see you. August 12th through 14th, I got to participate in the student trustee workshop that was put on by the Community College League of California. It was excellent, really good learning experience and I'd like to thank the district for offering me the opportunity to go up there and meet all the rest of the student trustees and learn a lot. It's a pretty amazing learning experience and I get to really understand more about what my duties here are in the district as a student trustee. While I was there, the California Community College Association of Student Trustees, which is the self-governing body of all students trustees within the state of California, nominated and elected me to be their president to lead them, so I am the president of all the state student trustees for California. So, yeah, woo, go me. South Orange County. So, that was excellent. I was really happy. Unfortunately, my flight got stuck on the way back, so in the air, we just were up there all day and I didn't get a chance to come down and go to the president's opening session, so I missed that and missed Erwin Chimerinsky's beautiful speech. I heard it was great. I did get to go to the chancellor's opening session, which was awesome and I really enjoyed it. It was really cool to see all the professors and faculty that had been here for so many years being honored, so I really liked that. It was, it was great. And then I got to attend a lot of the student government at Irvine Valley College's training sessions and get to see all the new committees interacting. That was excellent. On Friday, we got together at Boomer's, the two ASGs of both colleges, to kind of, you know, build community. And that's something that, as the trustee for this year, that I really want to do. That's my big message for this year is to increase communications and continuity between the two colleges' student governments so that we can have a more fluid system between the colleges. So, yeah, thanks for letting me talk.
Thank you and congratulations. That's quite an honor. Way to represent. Chancellor's report.
Okay, so I'd be remiss to not say that there's a couple other birthdays. There's Marcia's today, but Terry Witt just had one a couple weeks ago. Glenn Rockmore's is this month and also Tim Jamal's, I heard. Little birdie told me that yours is this month as well, so we might as well just let it all, let everybody know about the birthdays. I wanted to say thank you for the board, to the board for my appointment to interim chancellor and placing your trust in me this coming academic year. We have many changes and opportunities ahead for this transition year and I plan to keep our good work going as we look for a new permanent chancellor. I enjoyed seeing all the faculty come back for Professional Development Week. I attended both the president's opening sessions and breakfast during last week as well as the Faculty Association lunch, new faculty orientation, IVC's classified breakfast, and several other sessions, including sessions on accreditation and other topics. It was pleasurable meeting new faculty and new managers, administrator, and staff who were enthusiastically happy to be working at our district and college this year and I was impressed by the high caliber of all the hires. Acting chancellor's opening session was a success and was a full house. We appreciated hosting Von Ton Quinlevan, the vice chancellor of Economic and Workforce Development for the California Community College System, and Steve Gleyer from the LAOC Regional Consortium and provided a detailed overview of the state and regional aspect of the new strong workforce initiative, which we'll hear more about this year. If you missed this interesting presentation, you can view the taped version of it on the district's website. This past week was very invigorating, but it was even more wonderful seeing the full parking lots and hustle and bustle this morning, coming to the college with the first day of classes for fall semester. It was great seeing the students back. I wanted to share that we're moving along on the permanent chancellor search process and I wanted to let you know that we will be having a special meeting of the Board of Trustees on Tuesday, September 13th at 5:00 PM. That special meeting is going to be held so the Board of Trustees can hear presentations from three search firms who are finalists in the RFP process for the search firm for the permanent chancellor search. We will hear the three firms present, the board will evaluate them, and make a selection that evening, all in public session, so I please encourage you to come to those. And then lastly, we are exciting, excited tonight that you're going to be hearing four presentations this evening, all packed with good information, the basic A presentation, the district budget presentation, a presentation of the district-wide parking study and plan, as well as the student government budget presentations. So, with the packed agenda and these presentations, there's going to be a lot of excellent information tonight and that's all for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. College presidents' reports. Who will go first? Dr. Rockmore.
Well, thank you very much and to all the birthdays. So, happy birthday to trustee Milchek, Witt, and Jamal. And in fact, if you divide this three ways, I won't be tempted. So, there's the cake. I'd also like to congratulate Dr. Fitzsimmons. It's been a very smooth transition. Very much look forward to the next few months working with you, very much so. You mentioned Craig Justice. I would like to expand on that a little bit. Nine years in this district and using an aviation term, he's landed the airplane on the numbers each year out of the nine years, even during severe rainstorms and I appreciate that very much. So, I'd like to offer up an applause for him, for his dedication for nine years. Enjoyed Professional Development Week. I thought it was one of the best that I have attended and thank you, all of you, for attending those events. It was great seeing you there. I had two highlights. I had the opportunity to attend the student ambassador's training, just some are here in the audience still, and as well as the student government. And the student government training, I believe, had at least 40 students that were in that room and this is the week before classes start, so they are to be commended for that. It was very exciting to be a part of that. Thank you.
Thank you. President Burnett.
Good evening, folks. First, as is customary, I'm very pleased to introduce two members of our management team at Saddleback and one of them, I know you're familiar with. First, our new dean of math, science, and engineering. And would you stand, please, Art Nida, over there. We're thrilled to have Art. He was a former department chair of math over at Mount San Antonio College. Second, our new permanent dean of online education and learning resources is none other than Dr. Marina Amini. And as you know, she was one of our English faculty and served in the interim dean position, so congratulations to both of you and thank you. As President Rockmore said, Professional Development Week was extremely successful at Saddleback as well, once again, thanks to our faculty, our staff, and our management. Would like to thank the six trustees, actually, which might be almost a record, for attending the faculty breakfast and three at the part-time faculty dinner, so thank you. I mentioned it, but just note that the classified staff luncheon is moved for the first time to September 16th, so you all get another shot at coming and seeing that wonderful day. As you know, we gave out the annual state of the college. We gave out the new foundation annual report, which are things we do every year and for some good reading there and trustee Lang will make sure you get one as well. Today was the first day of classes. They went extremely well and as trustee Wright had mentioned, the science building went really smoothly for the, literally, the very first day that building was open for the first day of classes, so thanks to facilities and everybody else that helped make that happen. And also, as also was mentioned, our grand opening is on September 29th, so please all be aware of that. And with that, I give happy congratulations to all of the birthday folks and, and Dr. Fitzsimmons, we're thrilled that you're willing to take this on and you have already done a stellar job. We look forward to working with you. And finally, Happy Labor Day, everybody.
Thank you, Todd. Let's see, ASG IVC or ASG Saddleback College, whoever wants to go first.
Good evening to the chancellor, boards of trustees, and everyone attending.
Good evening to the chancellor, boards of trustees, and everyone attending. ASG IVC was excited to participate and co-sponsor Laser Week, new student orientations activities held Monday, August 8th through Thursday, August 11th. Each day included a different speaker, which included your very own Board of Trustee TJ Prendigas. Students participated in interactive activities, attended academic success workshops, and they were also able to meet students, faculty, staff during multicultural festivals. Also, this last Friday, this past Friday, Saddleback and ASG had end-of-training dinner and celebration at Boomer's in Irvine. We had over 70 members of both IVC, both ASGs meet and network with each other over dinner, followed by the fun offered at Boomer's. And last weekend, well, two weeks ago, ASG were able, 17 members of the ASG Executive Cabinet participated in training. As a result of the training, our executive cabinet members learned individual position responsibilities, participate in conflict resolution, and multiple other things that will be beneficial to our ASG this year. And then we also had our legislative pre-fall training, which took place August 15th through 19th. We have approximately 45 students, as President Glenn Rockmore said. From our legislative branch, justice court and individual committee members, and they participated in leadership training, they participated in the president's opening day session for Flex Week, and conducted icebreakers, activities for our international students. And lastly, we have upcoming events this week. We are hosting Welcome Week activities that take place over the first month of our school. Our first event is tomorrow between 11:00 and 1:30 p.m. It's an outdoor dance party, hashtag we are IVC. Next Wednesday, August 31st, is our Student Leadership Club Day, in which our members of our IVC committees and student clubs and co-curricular program clubs will showcase themselves to recruit new members. Thank you.
Thank you. ASG SC.
Hi, everyone. I'd first like to start off by congratulating Chancellor Fitzsimmons. I actually missed our July meeting, so I haven't even seen you up here yet, but it's a very exciting move, and I'm, you know, just thrilled for you and your new role, and we're really looking forward to, you know, as student governments, being a part of the chancellor selection process over this next year as well. So I will first echo the sentiments of Student Trustee Ford, as well as Taviana. We had a wonderful time mingling with ASIVC at Boomer's on Friday night. It followed our fall training, which we held on Thursday and Friday, and I just cannot tell you enough how excited I am for this year's team. I have not seen a group of students that is so motivated and hardworking and just excited about representing student interest on campus in my time here, probably in my entire life. So I am just so excited to see, you know, what we're able to accomplish this year, and hopefully together. So we are participating in this week's Welcome Week as well. We do ours over the course of this week. So we started the ball rolling today with getting that started. We actually handed out smoothies today in the quad and started with hopefully the first of many student polls that we held on campus today. So today's focused on, you know, what were the best times for students to come in for events, as well as what type of events they were hoping to see on campus this year. So to round out here, I just wanted to share with you all some new programming that we will be putting out. One of the things that I am really personally passionate about is student voting. And Saddleback College participated in a study recently that showed us our student voting rates over the last several elections, and to summarize those results for you all, I would choose one word: low. Pretty comparable to other schools in the area, but still nothing to be, you know, overly excited about, and that's something that we have decided to take on, not only with the student government, but in conjunction with our Student Development Office as well. So we have a couple programs that we have selected and kind of curated over the past couple weeks, but I wanted to put out the same call of action that I have every time that I've spoken about this topic in the past couple weeks, and just ask for anyone who's interested to participate. Even if you are not able to join, you know, a work group or get too involved in the organizational process, I'd love to hear your ideas, because I do feel like, you know, this is a very obtainable goal and a really worthwhile one to pursue. So with that, I will wrap up here, but let me know, because we would love to have you.
Thank you, Lucy. I think chancellor, or interim, just call you chancellor, Fitzsimmons had another announcement.
Yes, I forgot to introduce somebody very important, a new employee, John Osted. If you would stand up, he's our new director of Purchasing and Contracts and Materials Management. John comes to us from Los Rios Community College District with a lot of background in purchasing and contracts, so we're looking forward to having him here at the district, and he's going to really provide a lot of customer service to the colleges and improve purchasing and contracts and RFP processes. So thank you. Welcome, John.
Okay, do we have any? Do we have any board requests for reports? I don't think so. All right. So now we're moving on to discussion items. 4.1, Basic Aid Allocation Recommendation for Fiscal Year 2016-2017. Who will be presenting? I'm looking for Deborah. She's not there.
We're going to have Kim McCord and Brandy Delena, and also Vice Chancellor Bermutti will also be presenting a slide as well. So with that, Kim McCord.
Hi, good evening. All right, we're going to run through these first slides kind of quickly, but first, we wanted to remind you why we developed the Basic Aid Allocation Process. Goes back to 2011, when both of our colleges were on warning from the ACCJC, and one of those recommendations was to develop a resource allocation model to allocate all district funds. So the district had a committee look at this recommendation, and the consensus was that our DRAC model for our basic operations, that was well planned out and followed and had a great process, but the basic aid, the extra funds, that was not really clearly defined, and we needed to really address how those were allocated. So the committee developed a BP and an AR, 3110. They were approved in fall of '11 and spring of 2012, and it defined how those funds can be used. First, long-term obligations kind of comes off the top, and some of our one-time costs, like trustee elections and legislative advocacy, and then the rest was to be used, the bulk of it, on capital expenditures, both in IT and facilities, and those would be based on the district-wide planning committees, our Capital Improvement Committee and our District Technology Committee. So the committee that was formed is BARC, Basic Aid Allocation Recommendation Committee, and they take the recommendations from those other committees, along with these one-time and long-term obligation expenditures, and they develop a final recommendation to the chancellor each year. So for fiscal year 1617, we began our work, the BARC committee, in the spring. We came with a partial recommendation at the June meeting, if you remember, for $27 million, or almost 28 million. That was approved, but we held off on, on over $30 million, because we needed to get the results of the stadium project at Saddleback College, and we did receive that in July and found some alternative funding sources, actually. So the committee met in July to allocate the rest of these funds. So that's what you're seeing tonight, is the recommendations coming out of the committee. So the first items on this, down to that blue line of 27.9 million, those are the items you already approved. The bulk of it was long-term obligations. We had 11 million for our retiree benefits, and 12.6 million for our newly-formed Pension Stability Trust. And then we had a couple of projects that needed immediate funding July 1st. We, of course, still have our contingency of 20%, that's $11 million, and we had almost 33 million left to allocate. So technology is the first group. Dr. Bermutti's going to go over those.
Good evening. Annually, the Districtwide Technology Committee, a participatory governance group, prioritizes recommended spending for major technology initiatives. This year, we bring to you the following. The first, classroom technology and audiovisual. This replaces the equipment in the classroom, the computers, the projectors, the sound systems, and so forth. The second is a wireless upgrade at both colleges. The third is the Districtwide Network Security Firewall Refresh. We use a multi-layered security strategy that includes threat detection, malware, servers, and firewalls. This is for the firewall. Under that, as faculty and staff, email infrastructure refresh. We've already migrated our student email out to a cloud-based system, but it will probably be one more generation before we can have the security and performance we need for the employee. So we're going to do one more refresh of that system. Refresh MDFs and IDFs. The MDFs are your main distribution frame that connects you to your, your campuses to the internet, your internal connections, like you see in the closets next to the elevator, for example. Those are intermediate distribution frames. They sum our internal connections. So we're replacing our internet connectivity gear. HR Financial System Implementations and Augmentation for the Workday Implementation. And lastly, the Sysstate Compliance and College Requested Features. We created our own custom student information system here. We have to comply with various state mandates, which have been rather expensive of late, and we also use that money to add features that have been requested and prioritized by the colleges. Any questions? Thank you.
Hi there. I'm going to cover the next two slides on capital improvement projects. So for capital funding requests, as Kim mentioned, KIC makes funding recommendations to BARC, and those are based on district-wide plans, the Education and Facilities Master Plan, the Scheduled Maintenance Plan, and the Five-Year Plan. So here are a list of those projects that we're going to request funding for this evening, and you've seen them all before, so I'm not going to go into a great deal of detail on them. Most of what you see on the right-hand side is an augmentation to an existing budget. First one is the Advanced Technology and Applied Science Major Renovation Project. $17 million has been applied to that project already. $3 million is being requested for augmentation in relationship to IT improvements. That would be wireless, access control, new projectors and controls. Also, we had a seismic upgrade that was required that wasn't in our previous budget. IVC ATUP Building is the Furniture, Fixure, and Equipment Budget that we knew of last year and waited until this year to fund. The IVC new parking lot has already been funded for $3.1 million. We're adding a solar shade structure to that project, which will provide 1 megawatt of power to the Performing Arts Center during peak periods. That's what's projected for that. IVC Health Center and Concessions Project is a pilot project. It was originally funded by the Board for programming, and our attempt with this project is to program the project so that we are very clear about scope, budget, and schedule. Now, that's not to say that we're going to hit it entirely on the mark, but the idea is to reduce the need for requiring augmentation on projects. So this is the full project value, $5,338,000. The next one, the Saddleback College Radio, Photo, and TV. You funded the project previously, and the specialist that's required to move the radio equipment to the first floor of the library, where the TV and the radio curriculum are going to marry, it's just going to be a wonderful joining of those two curriculums. Well, that same specialist will also be applied to the television equipment, the move of the television equipment, and that's the augmentation that you see here tonight, the 1.2 million. The last two projects on this slide are the Saddleback College Gateway and the IVC Fine Arts Projects. You've heard about these before. They're the projects that were taken to the state for a 50% match. That's what we're requesting. Now, the Gateway is a $44.5 million project. The IVC Fine Arts is a $37.75 million project. So our 50% match comes in at about 40 million, and rather than get that hard hit all at one time, we're starting to ask for some of that funding to be applied now. This next slide is about support projects for capital projects. And here you see legal counseling. You see the ATUP site development, which is related to decommission naval base and the integration of co-agencies with the city of Tustin. The ATUP Utility Infrastructure Project supports that ATUP first building, as well as a few of the future buildings. So that's partial utility infrastructure, and that's an augmentation on an existing budget. The Sustainability and Energy Consultant is an augmentation after having done the ADA and the parking. We realized we need a little bit more money for that. The Preplanning and Investigations is about, we're thinking about doing a project, and we want to investigate some aspects of that project, not yet known. And then this next one is a new one for us. When we do capital projects, the IT departments at both colleges take a hit. There is such a burden on them for ensuring that the construction plans adhere to the standards that they would like to see in those plans, and then throughout construction, when the contract needs to make changes, IT needs to jump in and make sure it's okay. And then when the building is finally built, there's a need to install projectors and computers, and it's such a demand on them, that what we'd like to do is bring in a consultant, go through a process like that for a year, identify where we might have project budgets aid in that, rather than have the burden be solely placed on the IT departments at the college. And then the final project that you see here is the Education and Facilities Master Plan, and it's the year to update that plan. So we are asking for the budget for that update.
Okay, so that's all of our recommendations, and we're ready to answer any questions you may have about the projects.
Well, so, let me just ask, maybe it's a curveball to you guys, but I, I saw the line item on Saddleback College Radio, TV, and photo upgrades, or it reminded me that about a year and a half ago, we got a grand plan envisioned for revising the Saddleback College Radio and TV with new programming and alignment with Cal State Northridge, and a very ambitious timeline, and I know if we go back and look at the meeting, I really thought was a little too ambitious, and so, was it too ambitious?
That is correct. We are working with the Director of Broadcast Systems. Myself and CM is going to jump in and also assist on that negotiation. Actually, we have a meeting to go over this tomorrow internally, but Wednesday morning, there's a session with CSU Northridge. They came down in person, and they have their vice chancellor, my counterpart, my former, whatever, my former position, as well as their vice president of, vice chancellor of development and head of their foundation, as well as several other people on this. We're in the process of jointly hiring a consultant who will work with both, both colleges to be able to work through the various pieces that are necessary, and who has expertise in this area that's going to be helping us develop that joint agreement. So that's our next step, and we're close to getting that process completed.
I'm glad I asked.
As a consultant. So it's going to take a while, but both parties are very optimistic that this is going to be a win-win situation, and so we're still moving forward with it, and they're very enthusiastic still, so.
Thank you, Deborah. So let's see, we have trustee Milchekar.
Yeah, I, my question is, I, I know, I read about how the BARC is such an open committee with 21 members from participatory governance, and that's, KIC actually gives their recommendation to BARC, and then the District Technology Committee works together with them. Have all these very open committees, broad participation committees, actually agree to all of these augmentations?
Yes, absolutely. That's part of our process. Thank you for asking.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Lang.
Yes, I'm not sure that I completely understood the IVC Health Center Concessions Project. Could you maybe elaborate on that a little bit more?
I'd be happy to. So in the Education and Facilities Master Plan, there is a project for the Student Services Center to have an annex, and it was determined that, given the new counseling requirements and the need for spaces for new counselors, that it would benefit the college to take part of that annex and move it over into a sports area for the health center, as well as a concession stand for those sports facilities and some new bleachers. So we're taking partial project in the Education and Facilities Master Plan and the Student Services Center, moving it out, building a building there, and then we'd be able to have offices for those mandated counseling.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Wright.
Just a quick question about the Saddleback College Gateway Building and the IVC Fine Arts. Again, that's based upon this proposition, I think it's 51, $2 billion.
That or 55. I can't remember which is which.
It's 51.
Thank you.
But I think, what's the chances of that being approved, so that we get funding?
I haven't seen the latest polls on that. It's, it's, have you?
We've heard it's likely.
It's likely?
Yes.
Okay, so likely.
So you think our, our chances of getting the, the money is good?
Well, the, that's a different question. So once the state receives the funding, then every college in the state will be competing for those funds. The first outlay of that money has already been identified. There's 18 projects that have already been identified for the first year of funding. We have just in July submitted our projects for consideration for the second year of funding. Typically, project points have been, in the past, before we had the seven, eight years of drought funding, were funded at around 125 points, and then they increased, and then they increased. So the projects that were funded in the first year were pointing out at about 160 to 170. So those are not going to be considered in the second year. In the second year, the point system is considered to be, a viable project is considered in the 140s to the 150s, and we're in that range. So it's looking good, but we can't make promises until the evaluation.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Thank you. Student trustee Ford.
Yeah, I just wanted to address the board on like, the need for projects such as the Health Center concessions. At IVC, we've had so many issues with our concessions and the vendor that's there because the power. There's so many power issues throughout the summer we've had, and even in the last semester, issues where the Fume HUD or any of those things like, don't work, and they want to expand and offer more services to students. And we've done, through our committees, our technology and facilities committees, went out and did surveys throughout the campus and found these needs that students had. And we presented them to the cafeteria committee, and they would love to do them, but because of the power issues and everything they have there, we can't upgrade into new machines. They can't put, even a new microwave in would overload the grid that's there. And so there'd be huge issues with just adding just one new service for the students. And it's constantly, a machine's going out, and we don't have it for a week. We don't have grills for a week, or we don't have, two fridges are out, and it takes a while for them to get contractors out there. So it's a much-needed project.
Thank you. Trustee Jay.
Okay. Under technology, it's HR, financial system implementations. Is that for workday? It's $1,800,000.
I can answer that. That is workday, but it's also for related systems. So it's for the Tidemark Budget Development System, as well as the new contracts management system that we're going to start in the spring. And it's also support for the project management, testing, as we have a contract that's going to be in consent calendar, other things that, as we do the upgrades.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your presentations. All righty, let's move on to everyone's favorite subject, parking. And 4.2, District-Wide Parking Study Report. And it will be, you're going to do the report?
I'm going to do part of it.
Interim chancellor Fitzsimmons.
Myself and Mary Opal, who's our construction manager at the district, are going to present this. And we also have in our audience, David and Carol, both are vice presidents of administrative services, as well as other folks who have been involved in this project. So they'll be here to support and answer questions. So why did we do a BARKing study? So first of all, neither of the colleges or the district have previously conducted a formal parking analysis, one that has comprehensiveness to it and one that was district-wide. So in this particular case, we did some pieces of parking studies before. For instance, Saddleback College did one a few years ago that just looked at certain aspects, but not necessarily a comprehensive one. We really needed to take a look at it in a comprehensive way. These parking studies are traditionally conducted regularly, and it's to inform us on not just parking-related and facilities planning decision-making, but also just operationally. Having one in place lets us know how to, how much parking we need to develop, but also where to best place parking and how to configure them. Making operational decisions and managing a parking plan, and also, more importantly, as Brandy has indicated, we're going to be starting an EFMP process. This is one of the underlying documents that you would need to be able to analyze things as we move forward on buildings. Again, we'll be able to determine immediate and projected parking needs, and also, parking for ATEP will be analyzed. So while we're interested in ATEP is on the permanent site, right now we have parking on our temporary ATEP location. But as you might recall, we want to compare that ratio that we're provided by the city of Tustin, which we felt was pretty restrictive for us. We felt, and we couldn't base this on data, that it seemed more restrictive, and it was requiring us to have more parking spaces than we felt we needed. And again, this parking plan, as Mary will indicate, that some of the findings did confirm that. Okay, so we're going to have Mary take the rest of the presentation.
So basically, we had a consultant come in at the beginning of spring semester last year to do historical counts and do all, to do the analysis of all the parking. So they were at both ATEP, IVC, and Saddleback Colleges. So they were onsite on Wednesday, January 20th, and Thursday, January 21st, during the first week of classes, to take counts of the usage of each lot and how many students were parking and how many stalls were actually being utilized. And then they came back also on February 17th and February 23rd, which was the middle of the semester, once attendance stabilized a little bit. So key findings. So at Saddleback and Irvine Valley College, both experienced impacts to their parking during these times. For Saddleback, between the hours of 9:00 AM and 3:00 PM, the lots are at 85% capacity or beyond. And for Irvine Valley College, between the hours of 9:00 AM and 4:00 PM, so even later in the day, with some lots exceeding 100%. And what that means is people are illegally parked in the lots, not parking in the stalls. And at ATEP, the campus, there's currently adequate parking for the students. However, we're not going to be in that campus a lot longer with the new building coming So for Saddleback College, so basically, the college has 15 parking lots and also street parking along College Drive West. And so they broke, the consultant broke the parking down into three areas, the northwest, the northeast, and the south. The data collected indicates that all the parking lots are beyond capacity for the first week of class and for most of the middle of the semester, and that they indicated that the peak time is between 9:00 AM and 3:00 PM. And the south zone is the only area that does not reach full capacity, but only on Tuesday and Thursday during the first week. And I think that's just because of the distance from the main core of campus to get there. So here's an actual analysis chart of the time. So the bottom is the times hour slots throughout the day, and the vertical is the number of stalls that we have at Saddleback. And then there's four different days utilized. So you really see that the main peak was on a Wednesday between 11:00 and 12:00 in the morning. So based on this information, on the amount of stalls that are here, and also on the projected increase in population, we're looking at by 2020, a deficit of 532 parking stalls, and by 2030, a deficit of 1,054 parking stalls. So something to take into consideration for Saddleback is when this analysis was done, the Science Building was not open, parking lot five was closed. So it's a very dynamic process of analyzing this information. As Deborah says, it needs to be re-analyzed annually, really to be relevant to the campus. So at Saddleback, some of the proposed improvements from the consultant were incorporating a parking guidance system. And how they looked at this was based on cost and impact to the overall parking ability and the flow on campus. So this one was moderate cost, high impact. Constructing a parking structure, high cost, high impact. Constructing an eastern outer loop, high cost, high impact. Consolidating staff and faculty parking to better control and maintain the available parking, moderate cost with moderate impact, and to adjust the college parking ratio. And Deborah talked about that with the city of Tustin and ATEP. It's basically how many stalls per student. So this is a very large chart of all of the recommendations. I'm not going to go into it, but it just really talks about what the impact is, what the cost is. And so the items that are in orange are just general items, and the ones that are in green are specific to parking lots or the flow of traffic around the campus. So Irvine Valley College is a little bit different. It has 17 parking lots broken into five areas on the campus. So the data collected indicated that all of these lots are beyond 85% capacity for both the first week of class and the middle of the semester for zones one through four. Zone five, which is the furthest from the main campus core, does not extend to beyond 50% capacity. And it decreases as the semester goes on. So people are really focusing on zones one through four. Similar to Saddleback, same analysis on every hour per day for the days that they were on campus, the total number of stalls and the utilization. And you really see that peak is really 10 to 12, 10 to one every day. So same thing for Saddleback, looking at the projection based on the number of stalls, the total student population and projected. So very similar to Saddleback, they're looking at a deficit 2020 of 548 stalls, and by 2030, a deficit of 1,277. One thing I didn't mention is that this also is looking in alignment with the 2011 Facilities and Education Master Plan. So it's also looking at our build-out of buildings. Are we taking lots away? Are we putting buildings in place? So they've projected all of that with these numbers. So part of Irvine Valley College, for their proposed circulation improvements, are very similar to Saddleback. The difference is there being constructing additional surface parking lot, which is a moderate cost, high impact, and converting temporary parking lot seven into a permanent parking lot. Moderate cost, moderate impact. And similar to Saddleback, they did a full analysis of all the items. All the items in orange are general. Items in blue are very specific to Irvine Valley College itself. So ATEP. So currently, ATEP has three parking lots on its campus. The lot that is directly adjacent to the facility is the one that really gets utilized most by the campus itself. The other two lots across the street on Valencia will actually be closing with construction starting for the new site. But right now, as it is, there is more than adequate parking for all of the students at all times during the semester. So ATEP parking future needs. As we look at the new facility and the entire build-out of the 62-acre site in Tustin, we're looking at our future development and growth, and the parking supply will need to be considered in order to efficiently serve the campus itself. The city of Tustin Municipal's zoning code requires that one parking stall be provided for every three students at our site, and even worse than that is one for every two faculty. So those numbers are very high compared to the average that we're finding through this analysis. So based on the current programs offered, if ATEP continues to be developed with the three parking ratio per student, there will be more parking stalls needed, more parking stalls than needed for the campus by students and employees combined. So the first building will have more than sufficient parking for the first building and for future phase. So this ratio will prevent the district from being able to develop the property to its fullest potential for academic uses. So the current requirements by the city are stringent when compared to parking ratios of a typical college campus. So this data that we've collected is very useful in going back to the city to hopefully negotiate a better parking ratio for our future build-outs. So speaking of the comparable ratios, the consultants that we had hired also looked at local community colleges, so Orange Coast College, Santa Ana Community College, and Santiago Canyon. So basically, it's students per stall ratio. So Saddleback is currently at 6.62, Irvine Valley College is at 5.12. And like we said, ATEP right now is being developed at three to one, so a big difference. So what they found out is that the average is about 5.5 students per stall throughout Southern California, which is very realistic. So if enrollments increases projected without introducing additional parking, the amount of stalls per student will exceed the amount typically desired in the community college setting. And after discussions with the committee, a ratio of four and a half or a little bit more seems to be a good goal for both colleges and ATEP. Sorry. So basically, what did we learn from all of this? So what we learned is we verified the perception that we have peak parking concerns. We do have issues with lots overfilling, like we've, everybody says we do. We've learned methods to improve traffic management and mechanisms to improve pedestrian safety. And we've learned that parking and traffic management need to be discussed as new buildings are being designed, as they have the potential to change the dynamic of the traffic flow on the campuses. And then what are we going to do with this information now that we've done all of these studies? We're going to plan a strategy to improve the parking and traffic flow, consider incorporation of the study's recommendations into the upcoming education and facilities master plan, and strategize on how to best prioritize the recommendations from the consultant, and then accordingly, fund the projects.
You ready for questions?
I will try.
All right.
I have help here.
I have some, but I'll defer to my colleagues. I think they'll probably cover it. Trustee Lang.
Yes, thank you. I think you, at the end, you sort of answered one of my questions in that as well. First of all, I want to say, this was a terrific study. I thought the consultants did an excellent job of identifying, you know, the issues and problems that we have with respect to parking, offering some, you know, potential solutions, and dividing those up among the different ranges between, you know, low impact, low cost, et cetera, et cetera. And I think you spoke to what our next move is, is really to analyze those recommendations along with whatever other thoughts the committee has, and prioritizing those, and presumably coming back to us with some proposals in terms of, and needed funding in order to finance those things. And obviously, I'll be interested to hear what that looks like. You know, particularly, I know, you know, one of the high-cost, high-impact items would be potentially parking structures. There, we're talking about, I think, something on the order of about $34 million. So obviously, that, I would presume, would probably be potentially a future basic aid recommendation, if we decide that's where we need to go. And of course, you'll advise us of the staging of that in terms of when it is that we might need to do something like that out into the future, I would presume.
Right, and I believe it's currently addressed in the 2011 Facilities Master Plan as well. I don't remember, Brandy, maybe the 2030 range, maybe 2025. So I'm sure that the new one that Brandy's going to be doing will address that and really come up with a more appropriate date, or if it changes.
So one of my questions would be is, for example, if we were looking at new parking structures, is that an area that we could, that we might expect to get some state assistance with that project? You know, would that be a qualifying type of project? No, that would be, all beyond our nickel. I see you shaking your head on that one.
There's no students in there.
Uh huh. Okay. I would, one of the thoughts that I had was, is I would encourage us to move to having more charging stations on the campus, maybe even consider providing preferred parking. I think we ought to really encourage that, those sorts of vehicles and that sort of I was interested, I noticed on our tonight agenda elsewhere, we've got some parking funding projects that we're going to be talking about. And I think we, Brandy, you had mentioned the solar panels and the fact that we get side benefit from that. I think that's a great way to go. I don't know how much additional space, you know, that takes up in terms of putting in the roofing structures. I would think that it would be very little and have very little impact, but, you know, I think that that's certainly a good way to go. Has there been any consideration to, just out of the box, having some sort of a shuttle service to provide students, allow the students to park in a remote location, to be, you know, dropped off at a central campus location? I would think that, you know, if we're looking at that kind of an alternative versus putting in parking structures for that kind of cost, maybe it pencils out, I don't know. Maybe even having some sort of a people mover system like they do at, you know, West Virginia University, where, you know, people can move through campuses. I know one of the things that they had talked about was pedestrian throughways, you know, within the parking structure. What else? I think there's also, as you said, there's going to be constant updating of this thing because there's already some things out there that haven't been considered in this study. I think like, maybe the new Science Building, I don't know. Certainly, the new football stadium, as that goes forward, and other kinds of buildings that will have an impact on this. Then finally, I was interested, in looking for additional leverage points that we may have with the city of Tustin to address the situation about conforming to what we've identified through this study as being, you know, what perhaps best practices are in terms of those ratios. So those were just some of my thoughts in terms of going through this item. I don't know if you want to address any of those.
Do you want to ask a specific question on one of those?
Well, I'm throwing it out, see what sticks on the wall.
You're thinking big tonight, Dave.
Let anybody.
A lot of things out there.
Good evening.
David Kachaturian, Vice President of Administrative Services at Irvine Valley. The shuttle idea actually has come up a, a number of times in the recent few years, and we, you know, explored it. We never actually got to the point of implementing it. I'm sure we'll be looking in, into that direction in the future as well. Once our new parking structure comes online, I think it'll help tremendously. So that's going to alleviate the pressure on the, and demand on parking as well. So at this point, we're not using it, but I'm sure it will come up again and we'll consider that.
Okay. Trustee Prendergast.
So I'm going to be open and admit that when I saw we needed a parking study to tell us we needed more parking, and I was like, why did we spend money on that? But I'm glad to see there was actual data and recommendations to justify it because that was, it seemed odd to me. But just want to clarify, the parking guidance system, is that like there's signs saying this many spaces available in this lot, that kind of thing? Is that what we're talking about there?
Right.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that because it doesn't say that anywhere, and it's an assumption. And then I do want to reiterate, Trustee Lang, charging stations are an excellent idea. I think there should probably be a couple by the trustee spots because some of us have electric cars. So, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Milchiger.
Yeah, I, formerly, I, I understood that when, that the parking structures or the, or the parking lots were built by funds coming in from, when students actually pay for their parking permits and, and all the other parking revenues that we see. So is, is that one way you, you were looking to fund some of these parking lots? I know parking structures are very expensive, and I, I understand that they're also expensive to keep up because you certainly have to have security guards on them at all the time. So there, there's some additional costs in them as well, but if we need to go there, you know, we'll have to think about that.
Some of, some of the costs have been paid from the parking fees and parking permits. However, that doesn't cover the cost of the capital actually developing new parking. It's really used for the maintenance of existing parking. You really can't, except for some surface parking, really utilize those fees fully because they're not enough. They're not adequate.
Thank you.
Thank you. Student trustee Ford.
Yeah, I'd like to kind of echo what trustee Lang brought up about a shuttle service. You know, I live in the city of Long Beach, and the, the can, the city college campuses there have shuttle services as well as San Francisco. When I got to visit this, you know, a few weeks ago, I was able to go to some of the campuses there. They have shuttle services here, there. Although our district is a bit disparate as far as Irvine Valley College and Saddleback go, ATEP is very close to Irvine Valley College, and be, being it so close and with all the additional parking that's being underutilized there, that could be used to alleviate some of the parking issues at Irvine Valley College, at least for a temporary, you know, point of time, because this is a student equity issue. It's not just about convenience and parking, it's making sure the students succeed because then they can park and get to their classes on time as quickly as possible. And I'm not sure if it would encroach into any of our athletic programs or anything like that, but I'm not sure if this study looked at using some of those grass pitches that we have on campus that are mostly underutilized. I'm there throughout the year, and I don't really see a lot of student activities happening on those grass pitches and paying a lot of money to water and lawn them, you know, and cut the grass and everything, and no one's using them as often as I would hope they would. So maybe we can use that for at least temporary parking, and that's an extremely low-cost measure.
Good ideas. I guess I just had one question cover a different angle, which is, are we satisfied with the OCTA, the OCTA bus service here? I mean, that is related to parking.
That's actually a college president answer, so President-
Yeah, we've, uh, thank you. We've been working very closely with OCTA, our local cities, et cetera. As you might be aware, trustees, they cut back bus service in South Orange County. I'm not sure, maybe you can talk about Irvine a little bit, even though the bus service was from Irvine down to us. But with that said, the new trolley system and the new local systems, Mission Viejo has just applied, they're going to be meeting with us, and we're going to have a new local regional bus system. San Juan Capistrano is, Laguna Hills is. So it's kind of supplemented and changed the way OCTA's done it now, and now the local cities are taking their funds and putting together more tram and trolley-type local services, which in the end actually might do better for us. So-
But the study didn't consider potential transit mitigation impacts-
It did, actually.
Oh, it did?
The, the problem was, to be honest, we don't have enough people riding the buses. And it really was unfortunate in the local area. So we're happy to see this new transportation, which I think is going to get more of a commitment to local, and they'll be picking up at local places. For instance, from the train station right down the street from Saddleback in Laguna Galle-
There you go.
Coming all the way up to us and around. So we're going to be doing a little loop that'll go around, things like that. All the new apartment buildings that are going and built up now in Laguna Galle, along the train station, those, hopefully, we're going to get a tram that'll come around. So I think they're thinking smarter, and I think in the end it'll be better. But we have been meeting with them and talking to them about that, and the cities are working with us too.
Okay, good. Thanks. Trustee Milchiger.
Um, did you want to hear from Irvine Valley College first, or do you want me to speak first?
Sorry, go ahead, Glenn.
Yeah, just quickly, ours works fairly well for us. We have a number of students that do use it. We are losing routes, though, and that will, that will impact us. But in the study, I believe it's in here, is that we're really not designed for those buses. And so we have to do a little bit of work to make that more convenient.
Thank you.
My, my question was, I know the recommendation was that the low and moderate-cost items would be reconfiguring the entrance to several of the parking lots and even reconfiguring the entrance at, at Avery Parkway for Saddleback College. I don't know if that can be done, but are we actually considering reconfiguring the entrance to the parking lots? Because that's a low-cost way of helping traffic flow from what is said from the report.
Yes, they're looking at it, but the issue is just one item in reconfiguring it is not sufficient to take care of all the problems. So they have to look how best to package several items together in order to really make the traffic flow go through college better.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mary and Deborah?
I just want to add one more thing on funding strategies. As we're going through the EFMP process in our new EFMP, we can take a look at this as an opportunity. There are some creative things we can do as far as parking structures. For instance, you could put instructional field, facilities on top. I've very, I've seen it past colleges, universities I've worked at where you put tennis courts on top. I've seen driving ra- ranges on top and soccer practice fields that you can combine at. You could have your police station in there. So there's some things you can do there. There's also some joint ventures you can do with the city. I mean, there's opportunities, you have to really look at it in a creative way. Sometimes you could come up with ways where it's, you're getting the most bang for the buck with, in regards to parking structures because they are very expensive.
Agreed. Well, Deborah, Mary, thank you very much. Okay, what we're going to do next is move before the consent calendar to take up item 6.1, which is to adopt the budget for fiscal year 2016, 2017. Is anyone, are they going to speak? Okay.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, and Acting Chancellor Fitzsimmons, Dr. Fitzsimmons. This is our-
Interim Chancellor Fitzsimmons.
Interim Chancellor, yeah, Dr. Thank you, President. We are presenting you the adopted budget. And when we are walking you through the adopted budget, the team of four of us will walk you through the different slides. My request to you that if you can pen your question on the side and allow us to go through the entire presentation, you may, we may be able to answer most of your questions. That will help us. And also, that will help you to put your question more thoroughly. We wanted to make sure that we attend all your questions more thoroughly. So with that, I'm turning it over to Kim.
Hello again. All right. These first few slides are just a reminder of our board budget development guidelines. We did kind of cover these a little more thoroughly at the tentative budget, so I'm not going to reiterate them. If you have any questions on them, these are your guidelines that we use when we develop the budget. So unless there's any questions on those, I'm going to slip by those. So this first slide I'm going to cover is the overall view of our funds. $755 million, largest budget, I think, to date. Our general fund, $338 million. The biggest chunk, of course, is our unrestricted operating budget of $286 million. The rest, 52.6, is our restricted funds. That's our grants and our contracts, the state categorical allocations, parking, health fees, all those restricted funds we get that have restrictions on how we use them. And then, of course, $416 million in our other funds. The biggest chunk is our capital, it's over $200 million. We have $100 million in our retiree benefit fund, and then some of our smaller funds like community ed and child development. Some of the changes since we presented our tentative budget is we had a much larger ending balance, it was $16.7 million higher. That was mostly two things. One, we got a large chunk of mandate money from the state one time that came mid-year that we didn't anticipate, and we, we didn't really amend the budget for it because we, we didn't plan for it in our budget, but it was just one-time money the state came up with and said, here's another dump. So that was about another $8 million we didn't anticipate. And then we got extra property taxes. So that, that's the bulk of that money. Unrestricted revenue increased by $6 million in the budget, mostly because of the extra property taxes we're now anticipating for the new year. And our lottery funds and non-resident tuition estimates went up a little bit as well. And then our restricted funds went up by 5.6 million, just some additional allocations that we received and some carryover funds. So our operating budget is based on SB 361, and just to recap what that entails, of course, the grand 0% COLA, which was very disappointing, since we would like some ongoing new money. Growth of a WAPN, half a percent, which again is not a very large number to let us grow, only .7 million. And our base allocation adjustment, that was intended to address the STIRS and PERS increases and other operating increases of 1.2%. So it's kind of like a COLA, but it's not called a COLA. And then just so you know, we also have some one-time funds for mandate cost. Again, it's a lower amount this year, and the Prop 30 money that we get that is included in the budget. And I believe Devi's next.
Thank you, Kim. This is a recap of one-time and limited-term funding sources that we have. Mandate cost is what Kim referenced earlier, that's the amount, it's a block grant that the state allocates annually. Most of this 3.1 million is actually one-time. There's a portion, a smaller portion, that's ongoing. It's intended to pay the wall of debt, as the governor calls it, and it's unrestricted, but it's one-time. So the recommendation is to focus, of course, on one-time needs of the district. Part-time faculty, office hours, and health and welfare benefits, there's a small amount of partial reimbursement that we get back from the state. Proposition 30, education protection account, this one is intended for part-time faculty salaries and benefits, and it's set to expire by the end of 2018 until, unless it's extended through a new proposition, which is 55, I believe. Scheduled maintenance and instructional equipment funds, also known as PPIS, Physical Plan and Instructional Support Program, we got 1.4.1 million, rather. And it's great to see these dollars coming from the state. It's been in place for the last few years, so it's helping the colleges tremendously. And lastly, on this slide, strong workforce program, this amount isn't in the budget because we learn about it later in the budget development process, but we're going to be doing a budget amendment quickly in the near future to include that in the budget. The next slide talks about expenditures recap. As a district, salaries and benefits compose around 86% of the total budget, and we included, of course, the negotiated salaries and benefits, or the salary increases and step and column movement of staff of all employee groups. STIRS and PERS, there is actually a more comprehensive slide, slide 11, that captures STIRS and PERS rate increases and projected for the next few years. But for 1617, you see the rates, 12.58 for STIRS and 13.888 for PERS. Our health and welfare benefits increased by 2.9% for a total of $900,000. And the workers' comp actually went down to 1.6%, which is great, due to improved claim experience that the district has, and unemployment insurance state, stable, remained flat as .05%. And the general expense, which is a component of the DRAC model, that went up due to Title IX investigations, costs, legal fees, and property liability insurance. With that, I would like to turn over to Carol.
Thanks, Devi. Good evening. So within the final adopted budget, how much do we actually have that we allocate the basic aid funds? That's after the DRAC model that funds the colleges, district services. The amount that's left, we call basic aid funds that we allocate to the projects you saw in the earlier presentation through the, the KIC, the District Technology Committee in the BARC process. So we started out July 1 with $16 million as a carryover from the prior year, and that largely consisted of the contingency that we, of 20% from the prior year, plus some additional property tax revenue. So the receipts that we expect over and above for the 1617 year, over and above what is paid to the District Resource Allocation Committee formula is another 58 million. So adding those two together, we're at 74 million. So how did we allocate that? Well, 2.1 million is kind of a balancing amount because what happened is after we went into this BARC process, we made our estimates, we estimated a certain dollar amount and ended up with 2.1 million more. So at that point, this is unallocated because we didn't want to go back through the process again. We also have the 20% contingency for unrealized property taxes, which is part of the formula. So therefore, we have 60.8 million, which is the amount available for those projects, which we talked about and balanced to our presentation earlier this evening. The retirement system increases. This is such a, a big line item, and you can see in the top section, we talk, in the gold section is the state retirement system, which is for the academic employees, and the bottom section, which is the gray section, is the public entire employer retirement system, which is classified employees. So we kind of mimic the formula for, for each of those retirement systems. So in 2015, 16, we were paying 10.73% in STIRS contributions for unemployed salaries. That is now in statute, will increase each year all the way through 2020 to 19.1% by 2020. That should not change. As you can see, for example, in 1617, that was an additional 1.49 million all the way through to by 2020, we would be paying, you know, the 6.3 million per year in STIRS contributions, the employer contribution. If you look at the PERS rates, they are estimated rates because they will change each year depending upon how well the investments are doing, but they're estimated to be at 20.4% by 2020 for another 4.4 million. So the combined annual increase is about 10.8 million by 2020 for a cumulative cost over that entire period of time of 39 million. And as you know, Board of Trustees, you approved the pension stabilization account, of which we funded two years of a three-year plan to fund that entire amount for that five-year period. And so that's been a very prudent thing to do, and we're very grateful for that. And so I will turn this over to Sam.
What we are here is our bread and butter, exactly what is happening with our enrollment trends. We would like to show you with the three particular chart. The first chart is basically how we report it to the state. It is extremely important for us to know that all our funds comes from the state as our local property taxes, we have the basic aid. But the district has chose to remain with the SB 361 model, and that is wonderful that we need to find a way to stabilize that. The middle chart is showing you what we are producing in terms of the FTES from July 1 to June 30. So as you can see, for the last four years, we have both colleges, IVC and Saddleback College. IVC is a steadily kind of growth, 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 while the Saddleback College is also growing, but as you can see, they have some difficult years. And at the same time, for 1617, you may have seen the slide at the opening presentation for the president, that they will be working this year to add 916 FTES in order for them to find that number of 18,564 for them to produce for 2016, 17. The third chart is basically what our enrollment is. And you can see that our enrollment is stabilizing and increasing at the same time. At least at IVC College, it was 20,941 four years ago. Last year was 22,573, and the numbers will tell a little bit more eventually. Saddleback College was 41,000. They kind of have it deep, and now they are trying to come back. So you can see that they are at a 39,774. So majority of the time that we can see these numbers and we can say it is a stabil- So majority of the time that we can see these numbers and we can say it is a stabilizing and it is an upward trend now for the enrollment purposes for us for the future. We are seeing that this enrollment will be, remain healthy in the future as we have more and more units, more apartment complexes, and everything is being built. So we will be able to attract a lot more population. The next slide is what's looking ahead of us, what we are going to face. As you, sorry, as you can see, that our outlook have improved from the tentative budget to the adopted budget. But all that money came in as a one-time money. So it is not something that we would like to see as a one-time money, but we would like to see an ongoing revenue. Two things have happened, higher ending balance and also one-time funding that we have received. So that makes it more higher, more ending balance. But at the same time, the cost increases for the demand for our programs and the services is increasing. So we need to find a way to either increase the ongoing revenue or at the same time, we need to have the alignment of our expenses eventually in the future. The budget is presented to you, which is adopted budget, which is balanced budget. We are not anticipating any deficit, but we are using ongoing revenue plus one-time expenses, and that's your expenditure. Looking at the next slide is basically similar thing that we are facing is how we find a way to increase our revenue or decrease our expenses in the future years. There is a multiple way for us to do it. We can do it better job of better enrollment management and also the budget solution at the same time. Those are the both way we can find a way to balance our budget in the future years. What lies ahead of us for the future years from the state? As you already recall, the state have done a better job of having the $8.5 billion stabilization fund. In the past, we have seen that whenever there is a hiccup at the state level, all districts suffers because of under, revenues are being shot at the state level. But at least we are feeling good now the state is taking the proactive role of putting the money aside to stabilize the state finances at the same time. The second thing is the Proposition 30. It is going to be as a new Proposition 55 at the November election. Our district received $2.7 million, approximately $100 per FTES, and we would like to make sure that we are able to protect those dollars for the future years. The third thing is our facilities bond, 2016, which is in a November bond, which is a $9 billion, which is K14 facilities bond. Community colleges will be receiving a $2 billion over three-year period that we will be able to spend. The state have changed the formula. The trustee have asked that question, that would our, our project will be participating in those, those dollars or not? We will not be able to participate in the first go-around, but the second go-around, we will be able to participate. Now the state is looking at differently. The same district who got the funding in the first go-around automatically will not be able to participate in the second go-around. By that way, we will have more district will be able to participate in the future years. So our both building, Gateway Building and Liberal Arts Building, both are slated for the state funding, and we would like to see that we have successful, you know, facilities bond at the state level. So with that, we would like to open up for the questions.
Well, thank you for your presentation, all of you. Trustee Prendergast.
Yeah, very, very informative. Thank you. Just wanted to clarify a couple of things on the $1.2 million base allocation increase and the 3.1 million reimbursement. Those are one-time funds. The, from all intents and purposes, the intent, my understanding is to help with the STIRS and PERS increases. But since we, as a board, have improved the trust to deal with that, are we using that money now for somewhere else? And are we allowed to do that? Or is that going to help augment what we pre-approved?
Thank you for your question. I think it's a multiple part. The one is the base allocation is an ongoing dollar that rolls into our base. $3.1 million mandated cost is a one-time money. So that's one part of your question. Yes, the dollar that we have received as an ongoing basis, that district can use it in order to balance the budget.
Okay. And then you mentioned on the CTE funds, I believe it was like $2.5 million. Is that, we got the presentation from Steve Geier that there, that there was funds coming, but they were shared with the other districts in Orange County, and we had to work together with those districts to decide how to divide that up. Is that separate from this $2.5? Or is this included in that, and that's what we're guessing?
That is included in this $2.5 million, $2.5 million allocation is for the, our district.
Just for us?
Overall.
Okay.
And there's a 60/40 split, that the 60% come directly to us, 40% has to go to the regional consortia.
And so some of that could come to us?
Come to us.
But we're not counting it in the budget because A, we don't know how much it is, and B, it's shared with, okay.
And once we know the final numbers, we'll bring it back to the board for you to review the revenues and projected expenses for that particular program.
Perfect. That's it? Okay. Trustee Lang.
Yes. I guess my first question was, is just in looking at the enrollment trends that you showed, I guess I needed somebody to refresh my memory here on why the saddleback numbers jump so dramatically every other year. There's like a $3,000, you know, difference, you know, between the year before. Is that because of summer session or what?
Students, you mean? Not dollars.
FTES, okay. What, what, what's causing, I guess, the?
Yeah, that's why we added the two charts below because the summer you can count in either year when you report the 320 to the state. So the top chart is what we reported on the 320. We added the charts below so that you can see the consistency in the numbers on the charts below.
All right. So it does have to do with how we're counting the summer session?
Yes.
Yeah. That's what I thought. All right. So the other question that I had was, I think, Kim, you mentioned that in your report that there were some unallocated funds that we had identified after we had, you know, already made our allocations and then finally determined additional funds that we had received. But as part of the BARK process, I'm assuming that we sort of rank the different projects and make a determination of those projects that are going to be funded. And then there may be some projects that don't make the list because they were lower priority, but we wouldn't reach down and try and fund those projects to the extent that we then identified we've got additional funds? Or how does BARK work in that regard?
Well, at the time, we didn't close the books till late July, and that's when we get the final numbers from the county. And BARK had already completed their process. They already had to have an estimate, figure out what they could fund, get the recommendation kind of packaged, and then we got the additional 2 million. It was really about a million, but then when that carries over to our projection for the new year, it was another million. So we were pretty close on our estimates, but it's just that little bump. We're normally conservative. We would rather underallocate a little bit and carry it over than overallocate.
Okay. Yeah. But my question was really, I'm assuming the projects get ranked and some, for some reason, don't make the cut. So would those get first consideration where we have excess funds or how does, how does that work?
Yeah, let me interject here. I'm the chair of the BARK committee, at least I was last year and for the previous years since we had the BARK process. It's not just a matter of priorities because the college does do prioritization, and they are merged, and it comes through the Capital Improvement Committee, but we also take other things in consideration. We take a multi-year look. So for instance, on capital projects, we'll fund the design one year, we'll fund construction in next year, and we'll oftentimes fund FFP. So we do take a look at things. Also, we look at queuing. Sometimes it isn't physically possible to do all the projects in one year based, just based on sheer logistics at the college campus. So we don't feel a need that you have to spend 100% of the money to the penny because we know that it's going to be in the pot for the next year and it could be, it's going to be reallocated. So we have a timeline that we follow in the board policy and administrative regulation. That timeline, all the recommendations have to be from the planning committees to BARK on March 15. And then we go through our process and we bring our presentations to you in May. This was only late this year because of the stadium project and how we sort of did it this year, which really sort of stretched out that process. So by the time we have that additional funding, that really automatically goes to the next year anyways. It just happened to show up in the same year we're providing our presentation.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So I, my question is, you know, to, I guess, Chancellor, Vice Chancellor Fitzsimmons or CM, we like being, we like having balanced budgets and we like being a district without debt. You're in a unique position, Vice Chancellor, because you've, Chancellor, because you've been in a fiscal role and you're leaving within a reasonable period of time, so you can perhaps be more honest with us. What I'm hearing is the need for revenues on the one hand, but I'm also sensing we also need to manage our expenses and deal with enrollment management. Where do you think, out of what you, you know what we can control, where should we focus our energies to make sure that we have balanced budgets?
Well, first of all, we do have a balanced budget, as we indicated, and we're going to have a balanced budget next year. What we're planning on doing as a district, and the presidents and I have talked, as well as the chancellor's executive council, is as a district, we're going to look at enrollment. We're going to look at enrollment management and discuss that in a collective way. There are things that we can do. For instance, look at data and see how we can improve and really see how to focus our enrollment in a way that is for the best for our students, based on student demand, what programs are emerging, and really do a better job at that. We just started doing that at the colleges over the last couple of years, and I think we can collectively do better. So that's one area that we'll be focusing on. And again, working together on our priorities and very much working together on budget solutions.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. Excellent presentation. Oh, okay. I will, I correct. I will entertain a motion for the adoption of the budget. I think a motion from Trustee Lang and a second from Trustee Wright. Is there any further discussion on the item? Seeing none, let's go ahead and vote on the item. We have unanimous trustee yes vote with a student advisory yes vote. Motion carries. Okay. Yeah, we have. We already did? Oh, you want to move that too? Okay, let's, let's go to the consent calendar. So we're at 5.0 consent calendar items. Do I have any polls from the consent calendar?
5.6.
5.6.
5.4.
5.5.
Hold, hold, wait. Trust, wait, Trustee Lang, go ahead. 5.4 N?
5.19.
Okay.
5.5.
5.5 is Trustee J. And then anyone else? I was going to pull 5.14. Okay.
Me, 5.14.
You as well?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other polls? Okay, is there a motion to approve the remainder of the items? Motion from Trustee Wright? Second from Trustee Lang. Any further discussion? Seeing none, let's vote on the item. Unanimous trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote. Let's go in order, or here, let's go 5.4 with Trustee Lang.
Yes. First, first of all, I wanted to publicly acknowledge Brandy Delena and her staff for the hard work that they devoted to getting this project to completion. At the same time, I wanted to make certain that we weren't rushing things in filing this notice of completion. And I know there was one other project also that we, let's say, expedited in a similar manner at Saddleback. And so my question would apply to that as well. I know that filing the notice of completion causes certain, sets certain things in motion and also establishes certain rights and responsibilities that we and the contractor has. So I'd like for you to perhaps address that a little bit.
Great. So it's a public contract code, and it's related to beneficial occupancy. Once we have people in the building, that's considered beneficial occupancy, and it's substantially complete. When we're substantially complete on a building, then we file a notice of completion. And once that's filed, it goes to the county, it's recorded, and within 35 days, that's the timeframe, once a substantial completion has been filed, notice of completion has been filed, then there's 35 days for all the vendors and the subcontractors to notify us if they haven't been paid. And that then allows us to withhold that payment from the general contractor so that if there's a claim that's made or we're involved in a situation where we have to release double checks or whatever, we have the money set aside. So the notice of completion is really based on occupancy. And the concern that I think you might be having as well, we haven't been in that building very long, and what happens if something goes wrong? We have a one-year, what we call the one-year warranty period, and the contractor is required to come back and address things throughout that first year. I hope I answered all those questions you had, and if I didn't, I'd be happy to go further.
Okay. I just, I want to make certain that we, in an effort, obviously, to bring some of these projects online and allow our students, obviously, to occupy these buildings and take classes in them and so forth, that we're not being too hasty and that we've done everything that we need to do in order to make certain that the building is as perfect as it possibly can.
Rest assured, we really do spend a lot of time before we ever release the buildings to the colleges, as much time is allowable for us in most cases, much more than the colleges would like for us to spend, making sure that they're in good shape for the students.
Yeah, that's really my concern, is I know what tremendous pressure that you're under by the colleges to do that. So I want to make certain that that doesn't come at the expense of safety and other considerations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Acting Vice Chancellor of Business Services.
If I can add a couple of things. First, kudos to Brandy and her staff in the college, Saddleback College, and their staff for opening the science building today. That being said, we would like to be, you know, as a district who do respect all the contractors' community at the same time. There is no reason for us to hold on to their money unduly. By that way, we are also developing the relationship in the contractor community that this is the best district for them to come and seek the work. So that, that goes a long way. We are very hopeful that the opening of the building is successful, but at the same time, we take enormous amount of extra challenges on all of us. And opening, opening day is always a challenging for any colleges. And what we would like to see in the future is that we spend more time upfront to make sure that our buildings are working thoroughly, our images are really wonderful with our faculty, our students, and our staff, and the community at large. So we will be able to take a little bit additional time before we will allow the people to start moving into the building. Rather than opening day, we may find a different days. By that way, we can manage our opening day a little bit better because we have a lot of new students are coming, and we would like to introduce our new buildings more thoroughly rather than rushing it. So in the future, you may see that our, our planning process is a little bit, little bit different, and we will be working with the colleges and for very good reason that it is colleges' building. We wanted to make sure that we vetted everything what their needs are for the faculty and for the students. So you will see some changes. We'll recommend.
Thank you.
Who's approval?
Motion by Trustee Wright?
Second.
Second, was that Trustee Witt? Second, Trustee Witt. Any further discussion? Go ahead and cast your vote. Item 5.4 is approved. Unanimous trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote. Let's go in order, 5.5, Trustee J.
Yes, 5.5. It's the speakers for the, 5.5 is for, is speakers on the one book, one college. I thought that the speaker fee of $10,000 I thought that the speaker fee of $10,000 plus airfare plus hotel accommodations for two nights and any necessary ground transportation, total 15,000, was a little bit much for that. And if somebody could please explain that to me. Do we usually pay speakers $10,000?
No, but we also usually don't have national bestseller and families and authors representing those type of a caliber of speakers. In addition, as you know, the One Book One College is benefiting about 2,000 people, students and faculty. So this is a major event for us. Actually, frankly, $10,000 plus the, the transportation costs and the hotel costs is actually not bad. First of all, it's not one speaker, it's at least two members of the Lacks family.
Is it the author of the book going to come to?
It's the family. The book is called The Immortal Life of Henrietta Lacks and the Lacks Family. Have you read it? It's...
I haven't read it. We're waiting for the copies to come.
I know, I wait for mine too, but I've heard it's absolutely fantastic. But it deals with a very sensitive topic, which you'll, I don't want to steal it for everybody, but it's a very important topic that's going to be done and it's going to cause a lot of really good discussion in our college community. So with that, the, and it's not just a speaker, this is a, they'll be here for several hours. They'll be doing formal presentations, questions and answers. They'll be doing receptions, they will be doing book signings as well, free book signing. Well, I guess you don't call it free if we're paying them a fee, but they'll be doing book signings. And, you know, one thing to be aware of is, is once again, this is a very prominent novel. This is a prominent topic, and to get speakers of that caliber, this is what it takes. This is what usually is paid by universities and colleges.
Are they professional speakers or they have PhDs?
They go around and do it, well, no, they're the family of Henrietta Lacks. So they go around the country and they do do speaking engagements on this particular book and on their, their family story. And I might add also, they are, you know, part of the story, which I don't want to give away too much, is that they did not profit from...
Yeah, I read, I read your flyer on it.
So part of it also, this is money to the family who is not very wealthy. So when they go around, this is kind of their livelihood as well.
Okay, for a while, okay. Is anybody else?
Trustee Prendergast, and, and Trustee Milchker, Trustee Prendergast.
Yeah, yeah, without spoiling the book too much, I've read it, my whole family's read it. This is, this is amazing opportunity. This family has been through a lot, and, and I, I agree with President Burnett that $10,000 is a steal on, on what exposure we're going to get to hear from the actual family members of the individual that the book is about and the process. I, for one, support this 100%. But I did want to clarify, this is coming out of your budget, not the district's budget. Is that correct?
District, you mean the college budget?
Yeah, it's coming out of the college budget and not the district budget.
First of all, we have several funds and it's coming from different places, and we're just trying to work that out.
So if, if you guys have budgeted for this, the assumption is...
Oh, it's already budgeted, yes.
That if they can handle it, I'm, again, not just for that reason, but for ethical and opportunity reasons, I'm really bummed that I have CI, or state, no, league prelims that day, that I'm going to have to figure out a way to get there because I don't want to miss it.
Yeah, it's 12 to 2:30 by the way, that's what they're planning.
Yeah, it's, it, it's worth it, in my mind.
All right. Trustee Milchker.
Yeah, I read the book too, and I thought it was incredible and outstanding, and I loved the book. And, you know, being a biologist, it was really a biological mystery and, and, you know, really brought to light a lot of how the HeLa cells were initiated, and it was really, really fascinating. But I just wondered where the $10,000 is coming from. I have the same question as, as Trustee J, you know?
Well, we go through our budgetary process, and frankly, the 10,000 is the lowest part of the whole cost of the One Book One College. As you know, we order about 5,000 books that we give out to all the students and the classes and everybody else amongst other expenses that we have. So these speaker fees are actually, you know, I think the overall budget was close to 90,000.
So, so, I mean, the speaker isn't, isn't her family, the speaker is the author of the book.
No, it's her family. It's the family members.
Several family members are coming.
The author's not coming.
Well, the author of the book is coming and several family members are coming.
No, the author of her book is not just the family members.
Oh, only the family members are coming?
Yes, the author of the book would be more money than what these two are being paid.
Oh, that's interesting, okay. Is there a precedent for spending this much money, I mean, you know?
Here or at any college and university or anywhere elsewhere.
Here.
I think we've paid close to that for some other things, but this is a unique situation too. We've never done One Book One College. We did last year.
We did one last year and that was a good book.
But he was one author, no offense to him, but his book wasn't as, you might say, as were prominent as this book and novel and different reasons, so.
Okay. Trustee Lang.
I plan on attending this. Where, where is the, where is this going to be held?
It'll be McKinnon Theater. Did, if you all went to the last one, it was, it was amazingly attended, the fives and 25s, and the author there was absolutely Michael Peter A fantastic. So that one alone, and this one, like you said, will even be more engaging, very interesting. And we're very excited for our college community to, to keep this going, and thanks to our faculty, by the way, Academic Senate, for their leadership on the whole One Book One College.
Could you repeat the date that's going to be?
Wednesday, May 3rd.
May 3rd.
2017.
11:45 to 3:15 PM it says.
Okay, so the only thing that I, one day, I haven't, I haven't read the book, but I'm going to now, and I certainly will aim to attend. It is a long ways away, I have no idea where I'll be on that date at this time. So I, I, I respect the comments of Trustee Prendergast and yourself, but I don't dismiss the comments on cost either. Todd, to be honest, I think you said it's a steal. I, I don't know. You know, we are a community college, we're not, you know, I know you mentioned four universities do it, and we think it's, it is a lot of money. It might very well be worth it, but I don't think we should dismiss the amount as being insignificant. I think Trustee J raised a, a good point and, and Trustee Milchker. And I'm sure it'll be fabulous at the same time. So I'm looking forward to, to attending now, and I, I trust it'll pan out, it'll all be well worth it and then some. So let's, I will move the item.
Second.
Second from Trustee Wright. Let's go ahead and cast your vote. Unanimous trustee yes vote with a student advisory yes vote. Okay, before taking another item, I entertain a motion to extend the meeting.
So moved.
To...
9:30.
9:30 PM. Motion from Trustee Prendergast?
Second.
Chorus of seconds. Go ahead, any discussion? Go ahead and cast your vote. So we have unanimous trustee yes vote and student advisory yes vote. Okay, we're now at 5.6. Trustee Wright?
This won't take too long. I, I was just looking at the Biology Associate Degree in Arts and Science. I applaud you, that's a good degree. The only thing is, there's just a small mistake there. It says Bio 5, Animal Biology, the 4 needs to be moved over, that's four units, I'm sure. The 4, it says Animal Biology, the 4 is right next to the Biology, so it's not Biology 4. The 4 is the unit value. So that's all, that's solved.
Oh, I see. It requires a tab.
Yes.
Okay, motion.
I'll bring that to their attention.
Move approval.
Well, I'll, motion by Trustee Lang and a second from Trustee Wright. Any further discussion? Go ahead and vote on the item. We have unanimous trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote. Okay, now at 5.14, which I suggested to poll on Trustee J, and I'll let you go first, Trustee J.
Oh, I was just wondering, I was just wondering if this has anything to do with Workday?
It does.
It does.
It does.
Yes.
Okay. And we're putting, we're putting more money into it?
Why don't we let, why don't we let Vice Chancellor Bermuda respond?
I believe the original question was, why are we paying to have someone test the software? Does it Workday test its software? And indeed, Workday does thoroughly test every soft, bit of software that it releases. We are in need of quality assurance or QA testing services for this for a couple of reasons. The previous model you commented in the software industry was an on-premises model. You installed the actual computer program on your premises, and then the company would modify it for your individual use case. Cloud software is different. Every single customer in the entire world is on the same code base, and your product is differentiated by the configuration process. Think of it as setting a number of switches that are unique to your business's needs. No other business will have the same configuration that your company has, and thus, you have to test your own configuration, is the first reason. The second reason is we are constantly making small process changes to the software, which needs to be tested. We don't put that into production until it is thoroughly tested. So we run a testing server, and only once those small changes are tested, does this migrate over to the production server. This is a common role, it is recommended for everyone that deploys such cloud-based software.
Okay, so we got a motion. That's fine. Motion from Trustee Lang, second from Trustee Prendergast. Any further discussion?
No.
Go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote. Last item polled was 5.19. Trustee Lang.
Yes. My comment on that was, has, has been typical practice, we've got a number of contracts that are just under the $100,000 mark, which means they don't have to come to the board for advanced approval, and I'm obviously concerned about that and want to make certain that we're not seeing a situation where people are gaming the system, if you will.
Right. This is a packet of contracts that we had two from last month as well, and we worked with the department to make sure that A, the revenue is accurate, and that when it gets this close, that we really work with them to make sure it's not too close to the $100,000 board approval for executing and then bringing to ratification. So we'll be really mindful of that with this department for future, and they've already had the conversation, so.
Yeah, I just want to add, Trustee Lang, that I have had this conversation with interim Chancellor Fitzsimmons, and I share your, sure, I share your concerns. All right. Do you want to move the item?
I'll move the item. Second.
Motion from Trustee Lang, second from Trustee Wright. Go ahead and vote on the item. We have unanimous trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote. Okay, we're now back to general action items, and I think we're at 6.2 IVC and Saddleback College ASG budgets for 2016, 2017. Who's going first? It's like IVC.
Okay, so we're here to present our, well, me and my VP, Alvin, VP of Budget and Finance, we're here to present ASG of IVC's adopted budget, so, yeah. I'll turn the mic to Alvin.
All right. Good morning. Ah, sorry.
Oh, please, don't say that.
We're in trouble.
Chancellors, Rob Trustees, and those who are attending, let's go on the slide. Sorry, I'm sure you have seen this slide, we've presented this slide to you last, at June. So now we're just presenting what have changed. So as you can see, at Item A, the beginning balance, it has increased from 84,000 to 161,000. This is because of the unspent by, from last year, and also we brought in more revenue. As you can see, there are higher revenue in the IVC activity stickers, and we also had an increase of 20,000 from the cafeteria contract as well, which totaled up to 102,000 additional revenue. For the expenditure, there's a change, Item D, there's a change between the co-curriculum program and the department support. This is because we misplaced the honors program from the co-curriculum, misidentified the co, the honors program from the department to the co-curriculum. So we just did a swap. Any additional fund, additional revenue, we put them into our contingency fund since, because the, we have finished our budget allocation process last year, so any additional fund will be placed into our contingency, contingency fund. This money will used to, will used once we reviewed what, what all the requests have spent, and also review any funds they are receiving from other source, as well as what they're going to need. Next slide, sorry. This slide also was presented to you back at June, so I'm going to skip this. I'll give this back to Tay.
So right, here's our goals, and so you can see Goal 1, our services and activities. So ASG of IVC, we are meeting that by having our ASG Awareness Week, where we introduce our students to our different committees, such as Diversity Committee, which will be hosting diversity events. We also have Goal 2, which is our Student Leadership Development, in which we've constantly have met that by having retreats, which our executive team just had two weeks ago, Friday through Sunday. And then also last week, our legislative team had those trainings as well. And then our third goal is Facilities and Technology. Tomorrow, our Facilities and Technology Committee will be out, out serving students on what they believe that they need to make our school better for them, such as like Wi-Fi issues and things like that. And then our, our, our fourth goal is a fiscal management, which is Alvin and the Budget Committee has done with their budget allocation process. Thank you. Now we're open for questions.
Thank you for your excellent presentation. Trustee Lang.
Yes, I want to thank you for your presentation as well. The one question that I had, and you probably covered this before in the early, in the presentation that you did before us earlier, but I honestly don't remember what the answer was, so I'm going to ask it again, and that is, can you explain to me why we decided to decrease the allocation of funding to co-curricular programs and substantially increase the allocation of the different ASG of IVC categories of programs? Just what the philosophy is.
I'll allow Sessa R. Director to answer that question.
Thank you.
Oh. So for our budgeting process, we have discovered that some of the fund were used on traveling and instructional wise, which are unconstitutional, unconstitutional to our constitution, so we couldn't fund them, as well as there are the athletic, the, the big chunk is from athletic, and that those are what we cannot fund. And the Chair of the Athletic Department also said that those funds should, should not be, come, solely come from the ASG budget versus departmental budget, that's why. And also the traveling as well.
I would also indicate that we looked at how much funds were actually expended at the end of the year, and if certain co-curricular programs didn't use the same amounts of money that they were allocated, they received a reduction.
Okay, good explanation.
Okay. You good? All right, Trustee Prendergast.
So I just wanted a quick clarification. Your, your beginning balance, $77,000 higher than what you projected from the tentative budget proposal. I mean, your tentative budget is developed at the end of the year. Did, I'm kind of not understanding how you all of a sudden realized you had $77,000 more when you should have already known at that time how much you had spent.
So, and actually, we didn't know because we didn't have accurate information. Bills didn't come in, we, I mean, it was information that we were just waiting to do. So actually, as of June, when we had our board presentation, we still believed we would have... have approximately $70,000, but it was only after all of the kind of end-of-the-year fiscal closing happened, did we see that in tide mark. We actually had a significant more in funds.
So when is the actual fiscal year close on your expenditures?
June 30th.
June 30th?
Yeah.
So you're presenting a little earlier than that?
Right, exactly.
Okay.
So in an ideal world, it would be great if we could do it after, but it doesn't work out that way, yes.
And it's always good to find $77,000.
All right, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Saddleback College.
I didn't know it was in the same presentation. I thought it was in a different file.
All right. Hello again, everyone. So my name is Lucy Hendricks. I'm the ASG President, and I will be presenting our adopted budget for the 2016-2017 year. So here with me tonight, as well as some of our ASG members for this year, and our interim advisor and Director of Student Life, Irland Ballow, I also have my wonderful Vice President, Ray Camio. So just like last time in our presentation in June, we will be passing out hard copies of our budget. So if anyone would like one, as to not strain your eyes and neck up here, or get frustrated when I change the slide, just raise your hand, and Ray will come over and bring one to you. So we'll go ahead and get started here. So first, we'll take a look at our actual adopted budget chart, so strictly at the numbers. So do, to do a quick recap of our June presentation, we decided to go very, very conservatively into our tentative budget. I'm sure, as you all remember, we decided to actually take a beginning balance of zero for the year. Luckily enough, like IVC, and it seems like the district budgets as well, we didn't end up with a zero beginning balance, actually about $150,000, which will go into more in the budget highlights. So we just wanted to go in as conservatively as possible to really learn what it would be like if we were in that situation. It's very possible, we did anticipate having a much lower beginning balance, we didn't know how much, so we decided to take that approach to really learn, you know, what it would be like, if we would be able to operate, you know, what it would look like if we did have, you know, that zero beginning balance. So as mentioned, luckily, we did not, and we'll go into that a little bit later. While we're on that note, I just wanted to add that I still am very satisfied and pleased that we did take that approach. Whether it was the right decision or not, we learned a lot. I would argue, not only just the Associated Student Government, but the Student Development Office as well. It taught us so much about the value of our money and how to spend, you know, smartly and conservatively, and I'm sure that those are lessons that won't just follow us this year, but into our futures as well. So before I move on to our budget highlights, I did just want to point out one thing. So if you take a look at the tentative budget for 1617, so what we presented in June, as compared to our adopted budget that we're presenting tonight, the 1617 as well, the numbers jump substantially. So that is a reflection, obviously, of the much higher beginning balance, and if you actually take a look on the far left of our 1516 adopted budget, it's very similar to the 1617 adopted budget. All right, so to take a look at some of the budget highlights, as I mentioned, our beginning balance was a lot higher than we anticipated, $150,000 approximately so. So this was due to a combination of unspent funds from ASG, from Student Development, our divisions, having a higher contract revenue and stamp sales that we were anticipating, as well as a little bit higher emergency reserve percentage, which I'll touch on in just a moment here. Something that we discussed at the June meeting as well, is this year's ASG's devotion to participating in the Scholarship Pledging Program with our foundation. So I'm happy to say that we were able to contribute about $100,000 into that matching program, and that's something that we're really proud of. It's definitely a passion project for this year's group, so we're really excited that we're able to participate, so much so in that. So next, everyone's favorite, our ASB Activity Sales. So our sticker, stamp, however you'd like to call it. So the bad news is, we did miss our fundraising goal of the $80,000 by about $10,000. The good news there is that we thought we were gonna miss it by 20, so we did end up being a little bit higher than we were anticipating in what we presented in June. So due to that information, we've decided to go a little bit more conservatively into next year, and set our projection at $50,000. So that's a number that we're anticipating being able to hit, and obviously, any rollover there will go into next year's beginning budget as well. So to touch on the emergency reserve that I talked a little bit about earlier, again, in an effort to build a conservative budget, we decided to increase that reserve to 10% rather than the 7.5 previously. So again, to be conservative, but also to save for the future. If there's ever a project or something like that that we'd like to participate in, that's something that could be done from that emergency reserve balance. So next, we do fund a CSA bargaining unit that works in the Student Development Office. So with contracts and a union representative, there are sometimes additional costs, so that's reflected in our budget as well. And we also fund several NBU staff that work with the Campus Life Squad to help produce quad events through the Student Development Office. So lastly, something that was not reflected in the previous slide, but something you'll see if you got one of the paper copies from Ray, or just to take a look at our full budget, we were able to fully restore the division budgets that we previously had to cut a little bit with the June presentation. So that's back to matching the 2015-2016 year events, amounts, excuse me. So to wrap up here, I will share some of my goals as President, as well as our whole group's goals for the next year. So one of the things we really want to focus on is creating a more robust campus culture. So that is not only through our events, but student support programs as well. We had a very successful mentor program in the last year that I spoke about during the June meeting, that we'd like to expand on as well. So next, increasing our stamp sales. I know we talked about that a lot at our June meeting, and I hope I don't sound like a broken record, but it is something that we are taking a positive initiative towards. We have actually gone through a branding overhaul. If you look in the bottom right-hand corner of the slide, you can see our nice ASG seal. So that's something that we are plastering everywhere that we can. As you can see on some of my members in the front here, we have it on our nice new shirts for the year, and we actually created a giant poster that's about six feet by five feet, that we put in a PVC frame to bring out with us for all of our events. So we're really hoping to be able to associate that seal with ASG and the events that we put on over the next year, and we think that'll help with the sales as well. So next, our ASG this year's, our group is really interested in creating some diversity and inclusion programming, and really helping all students of all types feeling included on campus and feeling at home here at Saddleback. So that's something that we're gonna focus on as well. Next, we'd like to continue our division auditing process. I'd say more of an interview than an audit, with our divisions that we went through this year when we were anticipating, you know, lower funds that reflected in June. Again, that really helped with our conservative approach, and really helped with, you know, that learning experience of seeing where the money was spent, where it wasn't, you know, what programs were directly being funded by those dollars. So lastly, something that I spoke about a little bit earlier in my report, and it's very close to my heart, that I'm very excited about, is engaging students through surveys and polls. So we've actually been working with Jennifer Klein out of the Research Office at Saddleback to develop some polls. As I mentioned, we've been working on one this week, and the last time I checked, it had 70 responses, so we're doing okay for one day. But we're hoping to not only get feedback from our specific events, but for campus culture as a whole, and that way, we can really understand, you know, what it is our students are looking for, and how we're able to best represent that in meetings like these and across our campus. So with that, I will wrap up, and if anyone has any questions, I would love to answer them.
Lucy, that was awesome. I had a question. How long did it take you to develop and approve the new brand?
Well, it's funny that you mention that. Aria, our Director of Budget, who presented with me at the last meeting, would love to hear that question. He dabbles in graphic design, is actually an Electrical Engineering major, but likes to do graphic design, and he just took it upon himself, created this one and several others. I don't think they were in this presentation, but I'm sure you'll see them around Saddleback. But I'd say it was probably about a month process of, you know, deciding that we wanted to and working on it, getting it out.
You might need some help at the district in the near future. That's a good timeframe right there.
Yeah, we were, we knew that we wanted to do a new seal specifically, so our old ASG seal that was on all our documents over the last year was incredibly outdated. It actually said that we still had a Senate, which we haven't had in several years. So Aria wonderfully took it upon himself, and, you know, when there's excitement, it moves quickly, so we were able to get it out, get new promotional materials ordered. I wish I had brought some with me tonight, but we actually have some cool pens and stickers that we are handing out today. So we're hoping to see that all over Saddleback, and people associate, you know, the representative body on campus with that logo.
Please tell him, thank you.
I will, I will. He will be very happy to hear that y'all like it.
All right, Trustee Lang.
Yes, first of all, President Hendricks, I want to thank you on an excellent budget presentation, and also the enthusiastic manner in which you delivered it.
Thank you.
The only couple of things that stood out to me were, there was, seemed to be an overall drop in the allocation of campus life, although I couldn't quite parse out where that fell in the detailed information, but you probably know that better than I. And then, secondly, I noticed that last fiscal year, you had a category for mid-year budget requests, and I'm wondering if that's something that you just had planned to handle, a lot of increases in the contingency, or what the thinking is about that?
Yeah, definitely. So to answer your first question, the Campus Life Squad is actually going to be funded out of our emergency reserve budget for now, so that's something that we are gonna use those savings for this year. We felt overall it would be positive to increase that area, so that's something that the, you know, more conservative 10% emergency reserve will be going towards this year. I can't speak to how that will be used in the future. I can say probably similarly, just because of trend, but that's one thing that we'll be using partial of those funds for this year.
What does that include? What sort of activities does that actually include?
So that is anything that we have on campus. So all of the red chairs, maintaining those, picking them up in, or picking them up in the evening, placing them out in the morning. We have a very successful outdoor game lounge that has like oversized versions of classic games, so they maintain that. We do a great ping pong tournament series over the semester, so those are things that they all maintain. So not directly connected to like a student government member, but, you know, very similar goals that we feel are really important to have on campus. So then, secondly, for the mid-year allocations, since we were able to fully fund the divisions upfront, we decided to go ahead and do that money upfront rather than at the mid-year point. One thing that we do have that I didn't touch on in this presentation, is an extra about 9,000, I think right at $10,000, fund that we put into the special topic grant area. So that is a time where divisions, students, fellow ASG members, you know, really anyone on campus can apply to us to fund, you know, whatever topic they would like to do. I know one of the more successful ones last year was putting up some collapsible soccer goals in the quad, so, you know, it only ended up being like $300, but, you know, students were able to pull those soccer goals out, play a couple games, and then put them back away. I think for this year, we're actually gonna try and theme it, so maybe do, you know, like a sustainability project and tie with the water fountains, something along those lines, but, you know, if there is an additional funding need in the future in the divisions, that's an area where they can, you know, apply to as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Trustee Milchiker.
I just wanted to say that was a wonderful, very enthusiastic report, and I wanted to thank all the Saddleback College students, and I think the Irvine Valley College students just left after their report. Thank them for staying so late to give their report on the first day of school, considering you've got a whole week ahead of you of classes, so that was really dedicated that you stayed here. But I don't really have a question, I just want to say, it's so important for commuter students to have a, to have something that makes them feel like a part of the campus, like being a member of student government, playing soccer on the campus, being a member of Forensics Team, or the, any team or any organization will help the students, and it's proven statistically to aid in retention of our students and help our students graduate and do well and move on to the next phase of their lives. So I want to thank you for all you're doing to help all of our students feel really at home and comfortable at Saddleback College and want to stay here for their two years or as long as they want to stay. So thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, that's a goal of mine as well. So, you know, even if it's just interacting with one person on the quad, I think that can, you know, change someone's entire experience, and that's, you know, how it was for me. So I definitely believe in the positive impact of getting involved on campus, and I try and share that with as many as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you. Student, Trustee Ford.
So my question is on future policy. In your report, you mentioned that you had tentative underages that you believe would happen, and then you had actualized underages that were significantly less, but still under. I wanted to know if you had any discussion within your ASG about going into an opt-out system versus an opt-in system to increase total funding and to kind of have a protective measure, especially since you fund bargaining and non-bargaining unit individuals, so you fund employees through your student government. It seems like if you were underfunded by just a little bit too much, you would have to be extremely conservative in the next year's budget if not making cuts in employment or cuts in programs, so I wanted to know if you, there had been any discussions about the policy change?
Yeah, definitely. And I will say, you know, obviously, we thought we would be underfunded this year, so that was a reality that we had to face. I can say, you know, we were able to move things around, figure it out, so that we would continue to keep those positions, but I completely agree, it was tight. It would be nice to have, you know, a layer of backup there. We have spoken pretty extensively about the opt-out program within our budget committees, as well as our Board of Director Committee. I think we'd like to continue that discussion this year. I know that at the end of last year, when we were anticipating coming up, you know, incredibly short, we kind of shifted our efforts to, you know, accommodate for that, and what I kind of spoke to earlier, you know, really spending our time seeing what we could move around within that committee time rather than talking about opt-out. So definitely something that we would like to continue speaking about this year. I know that Aria, our Director of Budget and Finance, that's something that, you know, he's really interested in, so I definitely think we'll be able to come to a decision by that, hopefully by the end of, you know, spring semester.
Okay, thanks. Excellent. Good presentation. It was very good.
Yeah.
All right, thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the item? Motion from Trustee Wright, second from Trustee Jay. Any further discussion? I doubt it. Go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous Trustee yes vote, student advisor yes vote. Trustee Prendergast.
Apparently, I need to make a motion to extend the meeting to 10 o'clock.
Motion from Trustee Prendergast to extend the meeting to 10:00 PM, and a second from Trustee Wright. Any discussion? Go ahead and vote on the item.
Can I vote no?
Unanimous Trustee yes vote, student advisor yes vote. Okay, we're now at, we skipped 6.2, we already considered 6.3, so we're 6.4 Saddleback College Stadium and Site Improvement Project. And where is Tony Lippold?
I do have to add a couple of things under the status of this particular item. Unfortunately, we have a couple of things got missed out. Under the status, the last two paragraphs, Staff Recommend Special Construction Services Incorporated as a Successful Design Builder with a Total Contract Value of $48,999,900. The next paragraph should be added, as the Funds for the Design and Construction Project Faces are available in the Combined Approved Project Budget of $62,230,000. Thank you.
So with our vote tonight, will this be the final approval of the contract for the stadium?
Yes, but Brandy, if you want to add to that. I think the board is asking, with a budget of $62 million and the contract of almost $49 million, how does that work? I think they're asking that.
Well, I am asking that. I'm also just want to, I want to hear from you and from the district that we feel like we're, we've gotten the best possible price with the best possible contractor.
We feel like we've got the best possible price from the best possible contractor, absolutely. It's quite an involved selection process, and many steps were involved, many members of the committee, very thorough. We're excited to be participating with this group.
Okay, good.
And then, in relationship to the differences in price, it's the hard cost of construction versus the soft cost of construction. So there's very many consultants that participate in the development of a project. There would be surveys and geotechnical, and the need to pay permit fees, those kinds of things, the costs for associated consultants. Those are where all the soft costs lie. And so this is a construction, a construction cost as well as a design cost, because it is a design-build contract.
Right. Trustee Lang. Trustee Lang.
I guess my only comment here, obviously, we're talking about a large sum of money here, that once we make the decision that we're going to devote these kinds of dollars to this project, similar to other projects, it would be my belief that if there, you know, are others that get involved in this and decide they want to add more bells and whistles to this than what's been approved, that that would be a college budget item and not a basic aid, not additional allocation of basic aid dollars. So either college budget or foundation funds.
Well, I'm just throwing that out there. No, and I, I've had discussions with the foundation about their role in this, and I, and I do feel there's an opportunity for the foundation to step up. They've made a commitment, I think, to half a million dollars to this, which obviously, given the size of the project is, yeah, it's, it is very much a, somewhat of a drop in the bucket, not for them as a foundation, but overall for the project it is. I think there's more we can do to engage the community. I really do. And I also think there's, there, you know, this is, this project is obviously of great interest at Saddleback College. It's going to help us, I think, academically and athletically, and it's needed. But at the same time, this is also cast as a, as a project that's going to benefit the entire community. We had headmasters from several private schools here a couple of meetings ago. We've, it's been mentioned, CIA playoffs, but, I mean, larger than that, this is a community project, and I think we, and I've talked to the vice, or the interim chancellor about this, I think the municipalities have to be part of this conversation, and because this is, this is going to be a benefit to them and the communities here in South County. So I, I agree with your point, and I think we need to be mindful. This is a huge amount of money for a very important project at the same time. And there, as we move forward, I don't want the foundation, which is doing a great job, to stop and say, okay, while it's moving forward, the district's going to, going to take care of everything. We need their support, and we can't stop reaching out to the stakeholders in the community as well. And I know interim chancellor, you and I are going to talk about that some more because there's a lot more I think we still can do to engage the community. So, Trustee Prendergast.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up, make sure I'm understanding. So, hard costs, soft costs, is this hard cost coming in at about what we thought it would be based on the estimation of the $62 million?
Oh, yes.
Or is it way lower? Or is it higher? Is it, I mean, are we, are we looking at, and again, to kind of piggyback on Trustee Lang and Trustee Jamal, is it going to be, hey, we've got extra money, we can throw in this stuff? I, I just want to make sure this is right on line with what we approved.
It is right on line with what you approved. In fact, it was this number that helped us understand the project budget.
Got it.
If you don't mind my adding, I am taking to heart what you're saying about the budget, and we have an opportunity in design-builds to really juggle back and forth between what is scope and what is, what is needed and what is the budget, and we'll be very mindful of keeping this project in budget. And thank you for your concerns.
Thank you. Okay, is there a motion to approve the item? Motion from Trustee Lang?
I second it.
Second from Trustee Jay. Additional discussion? Seeing none, go ahead and vote on the item. Say unanimous trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote. Okay. All right, we're six point, item 6.5, Irvine Valley College Health Center Concessions Project. Someone going to address this issue? No? Do we need someone to address the issue?
No changes to the item.
Okay. All right. Any, is there a motion to approve the item?
So.
Motion from Trustee Wright, give second to Trustee Prendergast. Seeing no further discussion, go ahead and vote. Trustee Witt, unanimous trustee yes vote, student advisory yes vote. Item 6.6, IVC Parking Lot Phase 1A Project and Solar Shade Structures.
No changes. Move approval?
Motion from Trustee Milchiker, second from Trustee Lang. So you know, knowing request, no request to speak, go ahead and vote. Unanimous yes vote with a student advisory yes vote. 6.7, Contract with Enamix for Quality Services.
No changes.
No changes to the item, motion from, I think?
Milchiker.
Trustee Milchiker.
Second.
Second from Trustee Prendergast. I do have, I had some communications on this item today with the district, district services, and I, I do feel like, given the dollar amount in this item and the longevity of the contractor, that at some point in the near future, this should put up, be put up for public, a public RFP. I understand the advantages of continuity and service providers. I know that that's what you all want, you like. And I think at the same time, when we're talking about this kind of dollar amount, which is, I think, a half a million dollars, that I think it is wise to put it up for a public RFP. So that's my understanding, is that's going to happen the next go-around?
Yes.
From the administration, so I'm happy to hear that. Let's go ahead and vote on the item. Have unanimous trustee yes vote and student advisory yes vote. Okay, 6.8, Contract with Nudessic for Software Development. Motion from Trustee Lang?
Second.
Second from Trustee Milchiker. Any request to speak? Okay, go ahead and vote. Unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. 6.9, Academic Personnel Actions.
I'll move approval.
No changes to the item. Motion from Trustee Milchiker.
Second.
Second from Trustee Wright. Any discussion? Seeing none, go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. 6.10, Classified Personnel Actions.
Move approval. Are there any changes?
Are there changes?
If you, if you look on Exhibit A, you have two small changes on page five of Exhibit A underneath B2. We'd like to add the words to, after Director of Non-Credit Adult and Community Education, if we could add the words restricted slash categorically funded, that'd be very helpful. So that's on Exhibit A, page five, underneath B2, Director of Non-Credit Adult and Community Education, add restricted slash categorically funded. And then if you turn to page, to page six of the same item, and underneath of C3A, where it says Program Outreach Specialist, specially funded, it's not a classified manager, it's a classified bargaining unit position. So if you can strike the word manager and insert bargaining unit position, that'd be very helpful, and that would be it for changes to that item.
Okay, so.
And excuse me, we're, we're also pulling, excuse me, which one was that?
D1.
Yes, we're also, we'd like to pull also B1 on page five, excuse me. And it'll come back later. So if you turn back to page five, we want to pull item B1.
B or D?
B, where it says Director of Career and Reentry Center, page five. So we've got three changes to the classified item.
Okay, is that it?
That's it.
Okay, so I think we have a motion from Trustee Milchiker and a second from Trustee Lang to approve it with the changes that were just described by Vice Chancellor. Okay. Any discussion, further discussion on the item? Okay, go ahead and vote. We have a, we don't, we have a seven yes votes, seven trustee yes votes, one abstention, and one student advisory yes vote. All right, let's move on to reports. 7.1, Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College Speakers. 7.2, Summary of Ballot Initiatives. Thank you for putting that together. Appreciate that. 7.3, Basic Aid Report. 7.4, Facilities Plan Status Report. 7.5, Monthly Financial Status Report. 7.6, Quarterly Financial Status Report. 7.7, Quarterly Investment Report. And 7.8, Retiree OPEB Trust Fund. Okay. Now, finally, at 8.0, Reports from Administration and Governance Groups. So we kick off with Saddleback College Academic Senate.
Good evening, trustees. I have no report for tonight, however, I did want to express congratulations to interim Chancellor Fitzsimmons.
Great. Thank you very much. Faculty Association, Mark Blethyn.
Nothing to report this month.
All right. Thank you very much. IVC Academic Senate, Kathy Schmiedler.
I also want to congratulate now interim Chancellor, Dr. Fitzsimmons, and I also wanted to comment that having served on bark now for many years, kicked for several, although not this year, being an invited contender or stalker, I guess, at DTC, at the District Technology Committee, thank you, Bob, and so forth, that Deborah has done an absolutely fantastic job this year of pulling together a consensus in a very difficult and complicated year, and I just want to commend her for that and commend her to you, commend the whole process to you really, beyond Deborah, that all the participants in all of these committees have really worked very hard to achieve a consensual recommendation to the board as to how to spend out these basic aid, so-called basic aid funds. And it took a lot of work on everybody's part with, with some weaving by Deborah to get everybody on board, but consensus was reached, and I want to reassure you of all of that. As Trustee Milchiker said, this is the first day of classes, so committee work and governance and such is just about to resume, so we'll have more reports later.
Thank you very much. Vice Chancellor of Technology and, I can't see her, but I think it's Learning Services, right?
Yes, no report this evening.
Great. Vice Chancellor of Human Resources.
Trustee Jamal hinted at this earlier on, and then we did the same thing to Trustee Lang at some point in the past. Sometimes HR has to stop up and do the very difficult things that needs to be done in the district, so with that being said, it'd be appropriate to sing Happy Birthday to Marsha Milchiker and Trustee Jamal and then Trustee Witt and President Rockmore. So with that, if you could follow me, if you don't, I'll just sing by myself. Happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday, dear Marsha. Everybody else. Happy birthday to you. Thank you.
All right. You're in your keep this week. All right. Acting Vice Chancellor of Business Services, correct?
Yes. Thank you for the opportunity to serve the College District. Our books are closed for 2015-16, and that being said, the auditors are here this week, so they'll be checking our books for 15-16 in order to present you the audit report in timely manner, so that's my report.
Thank you very much, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
CSEA President, Scott Green.
Thank you, Mr. President. Earlier this month, CSEA had their annual conference up in San Jose. The delegates actually voted to support single payer health care. They also voted to support the opposition to the expansion of charter schools, and I want to explain a little bit about that. It's not that CSEA is opposing charter schools. They actually have CSEA members who work in charter schools, so they're not opposing to it, but they do want to try and save jobs, especially in the Los Angeles Unified School District, because they've lost 500,000 students over the past several years due to students leaving the, the school system and going to charter schools. So it's not that we're opposing charter schools, just the expansion until things can balance out a little bit better. One of the things that so much in, as part of CSEA is democracy in action, and there was a little bit of a debate over the type of training, especially in K through 12, that security personnel were going to get in K through 12 throughout the state, and there was that question of whether that would be state mandated or whether it'd come from some other source. So that did not pass, however, that will be coming back next year because they're going to create more of a plan where all the training will be implemented in some sort of fashion. They just have to agree on the type of, of training that needs to be done to keep our children safe. So that's very, very important. CSEA is very much behind safety, both at the K through 12 level and at the community college level, and will continue to support that in every way possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, one of the bad side, bad things about being board president, sometimes we have to adjourn for very sad occasions. So tonight, we adjourn our meeting in memory of Saddleback student Napreet Singh, who was tragically killed in a motorcycle accident. Our thoughts and prayers go out to his families, friends, and colleagues. Good night.